Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. We will start our meeting as we typically do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome, good evening. Thanks all for being here, certainly council members and everybody watching at home. Got an interesting agenda this evening, and we'll get to it in just a moment. Ms. Christensen, if you could start by calling the roll call of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Well, thank you. Mayor Bussey?
Here. We have all seven members of the Bloomington City Council in attendance this evening. Moving on in our agenda, we have the approval of the agenda, which is item three. Council, do we have any additions, subtractions, or alterations of tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, I believe, by Councilmember Martin to approve this evening's agenda. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We've got an agenda for this evening. Which brings us then to item number four on our agenda, the public comment period, which is a twenty-minute period that we have at each council meeting where we allow residents to speak to the council on items not on tonight's agenda. And we start the public comment period, as always, with item 4.1, which is a response to the prior meeting's public comment. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We had a number of folks who addressed the council last week. Only two of them actually had questions that they asked for some staff follow-up on. Those were questions by Ms. Natalie Maros and Mr. Andrew Thule. And for the most part, they focused on housing issues in the city of Bloomington. And I'm going to provide a little bit of information tonight, and then I'm going to come back at the meeting on April 5th and provide a lengthier response because there's a fair amount of data that goes into discussions around housing. So I wanted to provide some high-level information, and then we'll do a little deeper dive in a couple of weeks. Ms. Maros had asked about the Metropolitan Council and its plan, its housing plan for the region, and the number of units of low-income housing, and, you know, what's the basis of the need. So the Met Council has a housing policy plan. It is updated about every ten years. And anybody can see that plan if they go to the Met Council website. It's at metrocouncil.org, and they can just search for housing policy plan once they're at the site. The Met Council forecasts a need of affordable housing throughout the region over the next ten-year period of 2021 through 2030. And Bloomington's allocated need as part of that is about 586 units. By comparison, our neighbors to the north, Edina, has a need allocation of 878, so about 300 more than Bloomington. Richfield, meanwhile, is at about 121. And a lot of this has to do with the amount of existing affordable housing within a community, the size of the community, obviously. Richfield is less than half the size of Bloomington, as an example. So there's a lot of factors that go into the housing policy plan. And then, questions from Mr. Thule about population growth forecasts. In the next ten years, he'd asked about population growth in five, 10, and 15 years. The forecasts we do occur in ten-year increments. So we're looking at a forecasted population of about 93,000 by the year 2030, which would be about 3,000 more than the Met Council estimates today. And then 95,800 by 2040, so an additional 28 or 2900 over the next ten-year period. And then, Mr. Thule had also asked about ranked choice voting and the budget reduction of $75,000 that is included. He's asking when they'll see the return on that. We have already factored into the budget for 2021 the $75,000 reduction from what elections cost in 2019, because this is an odd-year election. It's the year when we only have city council on the ballot. School board is on the ballot, but the school pays for their portion of the election. So the city council elections in odd years have a different budget amount than general elections or even your elections. So the $75,000 reduction is based on 2019. The actual reduction from 2020 is substantially more than that. But we've already factored in the reduction of our estimate of savings for ranked choice voting. And the reason for that is primarily, we do one less election. There is no primary election, and so that's where the main cost savings come from. One other comment from Mr. Thule was something about the prevention of redistribution of wealth. And the city of Bloomington doesn't have any, anything to do with redistribution of wealth. So he may be speaking to how the incentives for constructing affordable housing are financed, but I'm not sure what he means other than that. So I'm sure that Mr. Thule would be happy to provide some additional thoughts if he has them. In the meantime, in the next two weeks, I'm going to put together quite a bit more information just in housing in general, and responding to a few more of the more in-depth questions that they had. And we'll communicate back to Ms. Maros and Mr. Thule at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 4.2, which is, in fact, our public comment period. As I said, it's a twenty-minute period at each council meeting where we allow residents to speak on subjects not on tonight's agenda. We do limit speakers' comments to five minutes, and it's not an interactive, it's not a back-and-forth. What we'll do is take the comments from residents, and Mr. Verbrugge will respond to them at a subsequent meeting, giving them the opportunity, giving them the opportunity to make sure that the answers are thorough and complete, and we have all the information that being able to answer the questions anybody has coming forward. And as I said, it is a five-minute limit on each speaker, and again, not trying to cut anybody off, but we want to make sure that we maintain fairness and equality as speakers and make sure that everybody gets the same amount of time. So, Ms. Wilson, do we have anybody on the call this evening who wishes to speak to item 4.2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had two individuals notify us in advance that they wish to speak tonight under the public comment period. So our operator tonight is Abigail. Abigail, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Abigail, do you have a Carol Kramer on the line?
Yes, Carol Kramer. Your line is open.
Well, good evening, Mayor Bussey and city council members.
Good evening and welcome. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Tonight, I would like to address some specific consequences of a ban on conversion therapy, should you decide to vote in favor of the ban in April. First, it will lead to a loss of confidence in the Human Rights Commission, which is supposed to be impartial and fair when researching issues for the city of Bloomington. Instead, what we see now is an agenda with very little effort made to present both sides of the issue. Both council members, Beloga and Lohman, brought this up on January 25th, but on March 1st, no further effort had been made to present the other side of conversion therapy, which has helped tens of thousands of people work through very personal issues in the privacy of a licensed therapist's office. Second, it will prove that city council members are able to use city commissions for political agendas, pushing a certain issue on residents, whether it is an issue in the city or not. That is wrong, and shows that reform is needed in how the city council coordinates with commissions to push their agendas. Third, it will expose the city to potential lawsuits that will cost enormous amounts of resources to defend. The city, for example, does not have the legal resources to handle a national-level First Amendment challenge and would be forced to hire outside attorneys to defend the ban. This would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we, the taxpayers, would be on the hook. Knowing this full well prior to the vote and voting for the ban anyway would be fiscally irresponsible and subject to see to enormous risk financially. Just because other Minnesota cities have not been sued yet gives no reason to proceed with the ban. The likelihood of a legal challenge in Bloomington is high, especially as this ban is gaining national visibility. Fourth, it will expose parents to action by Child Protection Services, as the parents would be liable for harm to their children once contracting a licensed therapist is determined to be abused. This is an outrageous violation of parental rights and is certain to backfire on each of you politically. Finally, it will criminalize licensed therapists who have thousands of hours of experience helping patients in the privacy of their offices. On January 25th, Councilmember Coulter stated that the ban was only meant to prevent therapists from practicing conversion therapy, and the rest of their practice would remain intact. By March 1st, this had evolved into criminalizing conversion therapy, stripping therapists of their license, losing their entire practice, and potentially landing them in jail. This is an erroneous abuse of therapists' First Amendment rights, which the Supreme Court has recently affirmed in their decisions. Banning conversion therapy is a bad idea, and I really hope you think twice before voting yes on this ban, knowing full well the consequences that await. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Kramer. Appreciate it. Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, do we have a David Clark on the line?
Yes, David Clark. Your line is open.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Bussey and council members.
Good evening, Mr. Clark. Welcome.
Thank you. In December of 2017, New York City passed a far-reaching ban on conversion therapy. You might be familiar with that case. The city's law was sponsored by the city council speaker, and it prohibited consumers from being charged for services intended to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity. And it created a $1,000 fine for each violation. But less than two years later, the New York City Council would act swiftly to repeal that ban. So what happened? Well, for starters, in January of 2018, just one month after the ban was passed, the Alliance Defending Freedom, an Arizona-based group, filed a lawsuit challenging the law on the grounds that it violated free speech and suggested that the measure was the first in the nation to consent or speech between counselors and patients. A senior lawyer for the Alliance said, quote, "This law was a textbook violation of free speech and the rights of individuals to pursue the lives and identities that they want to exercise." New York City's law was viewed as being vulnerable to a challenge because it was much more broad than similar statutes. In Tampa, in a fifty-page ruling, a federal judge struck down Tampa's ban on so-called conversion therapy, stating that the law enacted in 2017 may conflict with a patient's right to privacy and a parent's right to choose health care for their children. The judge said that state medical boards that oversee the licensing of mental health professionals already serve as a check on any malpractice. The founder of the Liberty Council, the plaintiff in the decision, said that that ruling dooms every municipality in Florida that has a ban and is the beginning of the end of more than fifty similar local laws around the country, the very kind you're trying to pass here. Back to New York City, the executive director of the LGBT Bar Association of New York said, and I quote, "It makes no sense to waste time and resources on a lawsuit, which always presents some risk of loss." And indeed, they would have lost. The Supreme Court had become more conservative, much more conservative after 2017, and thus a challenge of this nature was much more likely to succeed. So there's lessons here for Bloomington as you consider passing a similar ordinance that would actually go beyond the New York City law, criminalizing conversion therapy in Bloomington and subjecting parents to charges of abuse by Child Protection Services for contracting said therapy. That is outrageous, and the fact that this has even gotten this far calls into question the good judgment of this council. If you pass this ordinance, you are boarding a sinking ship, knowing full well what has already happened in New York City and Tampa and other places. You can almost be sure that a legal challenge will come, and when it does, it's going to cost the city precious dollars to defend. Passing this ordinance is not only constitutionally wrong, but fiscally irresponsible, and you can be sure that we, the voters, will hold each one of you accountable. New York City wised up and reversed course before it was too late. The question now is, will you? Mr. Verbrugge, for the next city council meeting, please provide an estimate on the low side and the high side on what a substantive, high-profile legal challenge would cost the taxpayers of Bloomington. In a time of severe budget constraints, it would be very interesting to see where your numbers come in, and if the mayor and city council will choose to ignore them. As much as you would like to ban a practice that is actually not even happening here, from a constitutional and a fiscal standpoint, the only way to vote on this is no. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Abigail, do we have other callers who wish to speak on Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
We have Tom Willis. Tom Willis, your line is not open.
Thank you for your time tonight. I have a personal testimony and story that I would like to share with you, just a snippet. I actually, myself, lived as a gay man for numerous years and cross-dressed, and I attended a church that wasn't full support of that. But at the end of every day, I found myself miserable and empty and lonely. And one evening in 2017, it was the winter, I came back from my friend's benefits house, got in my car, and I could feel heavy weight on my heart. It was total misery and emptiness, and I told God, "I'm miserable. I don't know what to do." And that was all that he needed to hear in order to begin the process of deliverance and healing. And shortly after that, just that happened. I no longer had the desire to be with men. I no longer had the desire to hook up and have sex. And it's all been him and just surrendering to him. I looked at no counseling, and just as the last speaker told us that this kind of counseling hasn't even happened in Minnesota, where people are putting electric chairs and are maybe forced to look at gay porn and then shox, whatever. That's not happening. And what would happen now, if this passes, is pastors and Christian counselors would not be allowed to share what the Bible says about identity. There, if they tried, their licenses would be revoked, and they would potentially lose their entire job, and they would just have to affirm the worldly identity that the LGBTQ person is facing. And for that reason, I urge everyone to reconsider this and consider the fact that this hasn't happened in Minnesota. I'm sure it's happened elsewhere, in really conservative states where you're not even allowed to be hired if you're found out to be gay, but it hasn't happened in Minnesota. It certainly didn't happen with me nor any of my friends who have also found freedom from the gay lifestyle. That's why I believe that everyone should vote no for this conversion therapy ban and reconsider what it would really do and how it would limit the freedom of speech from counselors and pastors when the LGBT person is indeed looking for not only healing, but they have questions, they want to know the truth. Would this allow someone who is in that position to share that truth? They would just have to say, "Yep, you are what you feel, not you are what God says you are, what the Bible says." This would totally disallow that, and I am therefore against this conversion therapy ban, and I hope that you will see that light, in Jesus's name. Thank you.
Thank you much for your comments. I'm sorry, I missed your name when you started. If you could just repeat it so we have it officially for the record, I'd appreciate it.
My legal name is Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S, but I go by Tom, T-O-M.
And your last name? Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Of course. Thank you. Have a good night. God bless you.
Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, do we have other callers who wish to speak on Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
We have Kelly Abadi. Your line is not open.
Hi, my name is Kelly. I have been a resident of Bloomington for more than a decade. I am also a bisexual woman. I'm calling in today to support the proposed ban on conversion therapy. To call this a therapy is in itself misleading. Therapy aimed at changing one's sexual orientation or gender identity is not a recognized or recommended approach to therapy. There is simply no evidence to support its effectiveness. Even if it was clinically effective, the problem still remains that it is harmful. This type of quote-unquote "therapy" uses the baseline assumption that being attracted to those of the same gender is wrong. However, we know this is not true. There is nothing flawed or wrong with individuals who have same-sex attraction. LGBTQ+ peoples do not have a mental illness that needs to be fixed, changed, or repaired. Beyond there being no clinical benefit to conversion therapy, we also know that it often leads to harm. Because of this, nearly all of the major medical associations are against conversion therapy. A small list of those include the American Psychological Association, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the American Medical Association, the American Association for Marriage and Family Therapy, the American College of Physicians, the American Psychiatrics Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I could go on and on and on. All of these organizations state there is no, not no benefit at all in therapy aimed at changing one's sexual orientation or gender identity, and in fact, often leads to harm by leading to feelings of guilt, shame, and anxiety. One may ask, how widespread is conversion therapy these days? Well, according to a Trevor Project, according to the Trevor Project, a national nonprofit who works in the realm of crisis intervention and suicide prevention for LGBTQ+ youth, 10% of all LGBT youth reported undergoing conversion therapy on their 2020 National Mental Health Survey. This is a very high proportion of LGBT youth. Further, this group was more than twice as likely to attempt suicide in the next year. Given that suicide rates amongst LGBTQ+ youth is already astronomically high, this should be highly concerning to us all. We should have no room for any treatment or therapy that is not supported by science. We should have no room for any treatment or therapy that leaves the lasting impact of harm on those who undergo said therapy. In 2021, this should not even be an argument or discussion. Conversion therapy has no clinical benefit and leads to lasting harm. Please ban this harmful practice in Bloomington. Thank you.
And thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it. Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, do we have other callers for Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
As there are no further comments on this agenda, please proceed.
All right. It looks like we've got all of our public comment callers taken care of, so I would like to go ahead and close the public comment period for this evening. Thank you much to all the callers who called in. And we will move on to Item 6, which is our consent agenda for tonight. And I believe Councilmember Beloga, do you have our consent agenda? I believe you're presenting that this evening.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you. So have heard from one, but last call, and he holds. And he holds. Okay. We do have one on 6.1 being held, and seeing no others coming forth, I'll move for approval, Items 6.2 through 6.6.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Martin to accept our consent agenda as stated. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Beloga, item 6.1?
Uh, 6.1 was requested to be held by Councilmember Lohman.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. I wanted to just get some clarification, just for the general public. The map was not necessarily clear about the area, whether or not it included the fire station or not. I did reach out to Carl Keel on Friday, and I wonder if he wanted to give comment on that I did see some response, but I do think for the general public, that would be helpful to know regarding this project that would be for Xerxes Avenue and Old Shakopee Road. And then also, a question I have is, will there be any traffic calming as a part of this, knowing that this area needs that?
Mr. Keel, you're with us this evening. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Would note that this item was a project that we submitted for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is a federal funding program administered through MinDOT, and it's kind of geared towards existing safety and traffic issues. And so it is pretty much limited to...
Ask you for a second there. The project, again, is through the Minnesota Department of Transportation. It's a federal project, primarily traffic-oriented, and will include the addition of some turn lanes at the intersection of Old Shakopee Road and Xerxes. It does not include those improvements we talked about to the intersection at Xerxes and 110th associated with the fire station, but would note that it wouldn't preclude those to happen in the future. It's limited to just at the intersection with Old Shakopee Road. What we're asking you to do this evening is to order a feasibility report, which would put together kind of the details of exactly what's included in the project, and would include an outreach effort for the public to get public input. And this will come back to you at a later date to actually consider if you want to go ahead with it. The scale of this project is in the range of $400,000, which is the amount of money that we received from the grant. that we received from the grant.
Councilmember Loman, does that answer your questions?
Yeah. Thanks for that clarification. I, I just know that when you look at 106th Street there in Xerxes, there's that also, uh, so I just wonder if, um, and we can look at this when we do the feasibility study, but I'm just curious about, you know, how much that plays, uh, into that, that safety part of it, that 106th Street and Xerxes, uh, piece of it. So, um, certainly I'm, I'm supportive of this, but just want to be sure that we look at the full scale of that, just be sure that we're utilizing, uh, taxed, uh, dollars at, at any level as efficiently as we possibly can. But, but thank you for bringing forward and, and bringing the clarity around this. And if there isn't any other comment, I'd be happy to, to move this.
So I'm sorry, Councilmember Loman, did, uh, were you, were you comfortable to mo- move this? Did I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If there isn't anybody else that wants to comment, I'd be happy to move it.
Any other comments, Counsel? Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I'd be happy to move the, the adoption of the, uh, motion around the feasibility report for, uh, 20,022, 201, Xerxes Avenue and Old Chocopee Road, uh, Intersection Improvement Project as listed in the, uh, motion sheet packet.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Beloga to accept Item 6.1 as stated. Counsel, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. So I've been notified by a, a council member that there may be, we may have missed someone on our public comment, uh, period. Ms. Wilson, can we check back one more time just to double check and be sure if there's no one there on, uh, the public comment period who wishes to speak?
Abigail, would you please make one more call for the public comment period and see if there's anybody on the line that would like to speak?
If you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone. We have Michael Reinhardt. Your line is now open.
Hi there. Are you all able to hear me?
We are, Mr. Reinhardt. I'm sorry we missed you the first time through. Apologize for that.
No worries. I know it's all kind of weird with, uh, technology stuff now. Uh, so thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the City Council, for letting me call in. Uh, my name is Michael Reinhardt. I am 24 and I am a lifelong resident of Bloomington, and I just wanted to voice my support for the proposed ordinance to prohibit conversion tactics against LGBTQ youth in the city. Um, I know this practice is commonly referred to as conversion therapy, but we know it is not therapeutic at all. Uh, it's based on the premise that being gay is a mental illness that needs to be cured or fixed, even though there is a unanimous, universal consensus among medical professionals that it's not in fact an illness. You know, it's been, um, discredited and debunked over and over, and not only is there no evidence that it works, but we actually know it's really dangerous and abusive. Um, we know that its victims suffer, um, physical and psychological damage due to the shaming and guilting and blaming, um, that they receive for their sexual orientation or gender identity. We know that youth that are subjected to it are much more likely to experience depression, loss of self-esteem, anxiety, or suicidality. Um, on a personal note, when I came out as gay in high school, I was really blessed to have my entire family's unconditional love and support. And still, as a teenager, coming terms with, coming to terms with my sexuality, figuring out how to tell my family and friends, not knowing how my grandparents would react, it was a really stressful time of my life and it would literally keep me up at night. Um, if, if I had received the message that my sexual, sexual orientation was wrong, and if someone had tried to forcibly change it, I don't want to imagine what it would have done to my mental health. It's, um, quite possible I would not be alive and talking to you right now. Um, so I, I just wanted to share that with you all. I know the City Council has the obligation to protect the youth that live here from abuse. In passing, this ordinance would do exactly that. We know being gay is not a disorder. We know conversion therapy does not do what it claims to. We know there is absolutely zero scientific evidence supporting this practice, and we do know that it causes great harm to those that are put through it. Um, we also know that it's happening right now to youth and vulnerable adults without their consent in this city. So I know you've got a lot of people to listen to as you consider this ordinance. Uh, I'm going to encourage you to listen to the LGBTQ residents that live here that this directly affects. I don't think there's any reason that this should be continuing to happen in Bloomington, and I really hope that you all take the opportunity to do the right thing. Um, thanks, and I will, uh, my call there.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, can we make one last final check and see if we've got anybody else on the line who wishes to speak to Item 4.2?
Abigail, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item 4.2?
Yes, we have a lot on the queue. We have Blue McCord. Your line is not open.
Hello, my name is Blue McCord, which I actually just had my name legally changed to reflect my gender identity. Um, and I think it's very important that we consider that free speech is not inhibited by banning conversion therapy. Uh, we've banned many different ineffective and dangerous therapies as a society in the past, and this is no different. There's nothing wrong with being spiritual or religious or having religious conviction that being gay is wrong. Don't agree with that, but that's allowed in a democratic society. What this is doing is helping LGBT youth who are being put through psychological torture that we know through scientific rigor does damage their mental health significantly. This is a proven statistic and not based on wild fears about homosexuals run rampant. Uh, I hope that you do support, like, do ban this really harmful practice that I know is happening in Bloomington. Uh, thank you for your time.
And thank you. We are past our 20-minute time, uh, but I will make one final call, uh, Ms. Wilson. And if, uh, if we, if we have more than a quick call here, we will have to actually go to the council and see if we want to move past the 20-minute time period here for public comment. So, Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, last call. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak on Agenda Item 4.2?
Yes, we have Angela Vargas. Your line is not open.
Hi, this is Angela Vargas. Um, I've lived in Bloomington for 25 years, and I've also been a practicing physician for over 30 years, and I also hold, hold a Master's in Public Health. Um, as a physician, I can tell you that there is no evidence that conversion therapy at, can actually change someone's sexual, sexual orientation or gender identity. In fact, it is unethical and dangerous, and it can cause lasting trauma to its victims. People that undergo conversion therapy are much more likely to experience depression, consider suicide, or have chemical dependency issues. You know, the idea that being gay or trans is a mental illness that needs to be cured is just flat out wrong. And that's not just my opinion. All of the professional medical organizations in the country are in agreement on, on this. Of all the forms of quack science, this is one of the cruelest because it takes advantage of people who are likely to be in a vulnerable state. Uh, one of the chief rules of medicine is first, do no harm. Conversion therapy violates the most basic part of the Hippocratic Oath, and the very few providers that choose to practice it need to face consequences for doing so. In summary, my lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender patients deserve access to compassionate and medically accurate healthcare. That is why I'm hoping that Bloomington moves forward with this ordinance to ban conversion therapy in our city. Thank you very much.
And thank you so much. So Counsel, as I said, we're past our 20-minute time period for public comment period. Uh, I don't know if we have extra callers on the line, but I do want to state that on the 19th of April, this issue is going to come forward as a public hearing. We'll have plenty of time to hear all these comments and all of these, uh, uh, points of view toward a public or toward a, uh, uh, conversion therapy ban. So, um, I, I would, uh, I, I would look to the council, uh, whether or not we want to extend the public comment period, or if we want to take what we've heard tonight and, uh, move forward. And as I said, expect that we do have a couple of council meetings between now and the 19th, and then ultimately, we've got the, the public hearing on, on April 19th. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, you know, I agree with what you're saying. The only, my only, uh, trouble with that is I'm not sure if those folks who are on the line are going to be speaking, uh, to that issue. Um, uh, so is there a way to ascertain that? Um, otherwise, I, I am certainly open to, uh, hearing what folks need to say or want to say on that, but, uh, you know, I, I agree with you that there's a way to, uh, push that, uh, out. I'd certainly be supportive of that, but I, I want to make sure that we're not preventing other folks from being able to address the council on other issues.
Understood. Good point, Councilmember Loman. Actually, maybe the first thing we should do is ask, uh, if there are any other callers who wish to speak on Item 4.2, and then, uh, maybe even do a quick poll and see if there, if there are, uh, exactly what they're going to be speaking on. Ms. Wilson, can we see if there's anybody else on the line?
Abigail, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item 4.2? Do, can you give me a number?
Yes. Yes, we currently have six.
Okay.
On cue.
Can you ask them to, um, indicate if they wish to speak on something other than the proposed conversion therapy ban?
Um, I'm not sure. Would you like me to open all their lines?
No, we, we, what I, what I think we can do, and I think they can hear us here, um, I, I think if you're hold, if you're on hold, you probably heard what I just said, that we will have, uh, additional opportunities here, and ultimately, a public hearing on this item on the, the 19th of April. So what I would like to do right now is ask those six callers who are holding on Item 4.2, if you're, if you're not looking to speak, uh, if you're looking to speak on a subject other than the conversion therapy ban, to, to press star one and, and to come forward. Otherwise, I think, uh, unless the council has a, um, a pressing desire to, to hear the rest of these comments, uh, what I'd like to do is close the public comment period, save these for another evening, and, uh, move on with our agenda, which is, uh, which is a full one as it stands right now. So, so can, can we do that? If, if there are callers who wish to speak to something other than the conversion therapy ban, if you could press star one and chime in, and we'd like to, uh, like to hear you
Right now, you can redraw your question and press star six. I mean, star one, sorry. We have Gretchen Ronca. Your line is not open.
Yes. Hello, this is Gretchen, uh, Ronca, a 48-year-old resident of Bloomington, 5201 West 108th Street, and I want to compliment, uh, the City Council, the Planning Commission, for the very clear messaging that's coming from you regarding the very positive outcome of the ranked choice voting initiative that was on our ballot last fall. We, the voters of Bloomington, uh, supported that, and, um, I appreciate the clear information related to this approved, uh, amendment that is coming from the city. And, um, I know that you, the council, are listening to the voters. Um, you submitted a short, um, survey recently, and I appreciate, um, I appreciate your making this whole new initiative, this new way of voting, um, very clear to we, the voters who approved it, and to the rest of the citizens of Bloomington. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ronca. Appreciate it. Uh, Councilmember Coulter, I see your hand up. Did you, did you want to chime in here?
I was actually just going to ask and see if we could see how many folks are, are, were in the queue for the public comment period.
That's what we're trying to ascertain right now. And, um, Ms. Wilson, let's start one more time, see if there's anybody, uh, if there's anybody on the line holding for Item 4.2. If you're on the line for an item other than, uh, uh, conversion ban, or conversion therapy ban, uh, and frankly, for ranked choice voting, because that is on the agenda later this evening as well, um, just want to make sure that we, we, as I said, we've got a full agenda, and I want to make sure we get to everything at, at a reasonable hour this evening.
Abigail, do we have any callers that wish to speak to the council on a topic other than the proposed conversion therapy ban or the ranked choice voting issue?
Again, please press star zero to redraw your line on cue, and then press star one We have Andrew Thule. Your line is not open.
Good evening, Mr. Thule.
How are you guys doing? Welcome, uh, Mayor, Manager, City Council. Um, I just wanted to briefly, I, I sent an email out to the council this week. Um, I live approximately three blocks from American Boulevard and kind of the Nicollet Avenue corridor over in that area. Um, what I've observed is the city trucks picking up, um, Walmart, um, carts. So I don't know, they're supposed to have locking mechanisms on the wheels, and, uh, they're not supposed to be able to leave the premises of Walmart, but, uh, I don't think this is the duties of our, our city workers, you know, as far as, uh, picking up carts along American Boulevard. Obviously, it'll, they don't look good, but I want the city to make sure they contact Walmart and have them go pick up the, the carts over in the, uh, over on, especially on American Boulevard, because we, we do get them parked in the neighborhood quite a bit as well. So, uh, you know, just wanted to bring that up to the council and, uh, make them, make that known. Like I said, they're supposed to have locking mechanisms on the wheels to, to keep them in the lot, so I don't know if they can put signs in Walmart saying, yeah, these carts beyond the premises are theft, you know, and whatnot, or post the property, or whatever kind of solution that could be, uh, brought up on that. So, um, on another note, um, I'm sure you guys saw some, uh, signs outside of City Hall. Um, so I know I can't say the word, but, uh, you know, people are, are not forgetting about the, the, there's several signs around the City Hall, so, but, uh, anyway, I hope you guys have a great night. We'll talk to you soon. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Thule. Ms. Wilson, one last try here.
Abigail, any other callers?
We have Renee Anderson. Your line is not open.
Hi.
Good evening.
Okay, so quite honestly, I have been very confused about this star stuff. Um, it's not very described very well. Um, I did want to talk about the conversion therapy ban. Is that still okay for me to do, or is that not okay?
Well, what I'd like to do, I, I, you certainly, you certainly can, but what I, what I'm saying here is we've, the, this ordinance will come up before the council on the 19th of April. And so we have opportunities to, to hear public comment between now and then. And frankly, on the 19th of April, we're going to have a, a full public hearing. So any input from any member of the community is, is appropriate at that time, uh, during the, during a public hearing. And so, uh, it's, uh, I, I understand what, what we're hearing from a lot of people is frankly, stuff that I would expect to hear at a public, at a public hearing. Uh, the arguments for and against, uh, basically folks coming forward showing, you know, showing their hands either virtually or, or in person, if, if at all possible, about, um, a conversion therapy ban. So we, we do have a, we've got a full agenda tonight, and what I'm trying to do is just trying to streamline things because we do have additional opportunities for folks to come forward on this, including to, including a full public hearing on April 19th.
Okay. And while I understand those, it's also important to listen to people that have to comment because, like, for me personally, if I wasn't able to talk today, um, I might not have a chance in the future because some people have work schedules where things can go crazy, and you can schedule to work at, you know, times where most people do have the opportunity to be off and comment on things like this. Is it okay that I give my comment?
Why don't, um, well, tell you what, we're, we'll allow this last one. We are well past our 20 minutes for this, uh, this, uh, item. Officially, we do need council authority and approval to move past the 20 minutes. But what we're going to do, what I will do, let, let's allow this one past, this, this one final comment here. Then anybody else on the line or anybody else who has comments on this, again, uh, we have additional public comment periods coming between now and the 19th, and we have a full public hearing on the 19th. And you, you can always send an email, you can send information, you can call any member of the City Council, our phone numbers are on the website. Um, so, uh, there is plenty of opportunity between now and when, when we're actually going to consider this, and, uh, we'll, we'll have a chance to, to hear every voice that wants to speak on this. But as I said, we're past our 20 minutes here, and I would like to get moving on our, on our agenda. So if, if you could go ahead and if you could keep it...
I will let you move forward.
No, if, if you can go ahead and just be as...
I will let you move forward. I can...
Be as brief as you possibly can.
It's okay. You're ready to move forward. You can move forward, and I will try to do my best in the future.
Please, I hope you join us on the 19th for the, for the public hearing on this. That's, uh, that's when we'll, we'll have a plenty of opportunities. So with that, that counsel, I, I would like to close the public hearing once again and be official with it, and appreciate the many callers that we have, and appreciate everybody who looking to provide feedback and input and that kind of thing. We, we have plenty of opportunities, and we'll have additional chances for folks to speak up on this issue and any other issue at, at further, at, at future council meetings and on the 19th, when we actually do have, uh, the public hearing on the proposed conversion therapy ban. So with that, let's move on with our agenda. Let's move on to Item 7, which is our hearings resolutions and our, uh, ordinances, and start with Item 7.1, which is a public hearing on a new, uh, uh, off-site intoxicating liquor license. Mr. Junker?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Uh, yes, we've got a ownership coming up at Cedar Liquor, um, a known subject to us, and so the, the background in this went very easy, and we're just looking for your approval.
Counsel, any questions on this? As Mr. Junker said, this is, uh, a, a, a new owner at Cedar Liquor.[1773.18] As Mr. Junker said, this is a new owner at Cedar Liquor. Any other questions on this? Seeing none coming from the council. This is a public hearing, and I would like to open this public hearing. Item 7.1, a public hearing on the new off-sale intoxicating liquor license application for Cedar Liquor, doing business at Cedar Liquor at 1800 East Old Chappie Road.
Abigail, do we have any callers who wish to speak about the liquor license application for Cedar Liquor?
And again, if you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone. There are no comments on this agenda, please proceed.
Thank you.
We have no comments, no one coming forward to speak on this. Item 7.1, council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion by councilmember Martin, and a second by, I missed who the second was from. Can you raise your hand if you- Council, can you hear me, or are we locked up? You can hear me, all right? I think we were locked up there for half a second. So I saw, I heard a motion from councilmember Martin. Did we have a second? Who was the seconder on that one?
Mayor, if it's not clear, put the second down for councilmember Loman.
I will do that, councilmember Loman, thank you very much. So we have a motion by councilmember Martin, a second by councilmember Loman to close the public hearing. No further council discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Thank you. Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.1. Council, do we have any comments, questions, anything for Mr. Junker on this? If not, I would look for action.
Mayor, I'm happy to make this motion.
Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve an on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Calabria Group Incorporated, doing business as Cedar Liquor.
Do we have a second?
Second, councilmember Loman.
We have a motion by councilmember Martin, a second by councilmember Loman for item 7.2, or excuse me, 7.1, to approve an on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Calabria Group, doing business as Cedar Liquor. Hearing no further council discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We can move on to item 7.2 on our agenda, which is another public hearing. This is a public hearing on the proposed ordinance to implement ranked choice voting for municipal elections. We've talked about this at a couple of prior meetings to try and hammer out some of the details, some of the specifics. And what we're going to be doing this evening is a public hearing on the ordinance itself. And I believe Ms. Wilson is going to lead us on this, and has a couple of slides. And then we'll see if we have any council questions or discussion, and then we'll get into the public hearing. Ms. Wilson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a public hearing tonight on a draft ordinance to implement ranked choice voting for municipal elections. This was a... Sorry, for some reason, I'm... Having difficulty... Advancing my slides. If you'll excuse me for one moment, I'm going to take a different approach. Hopefully, you can see that. I apologize for the distraction that is the slides on the side, but hopefully, we can keep this moving. This was a ballot question on the November 2020 ballot here in Bloomington, and voters voted 25,339 yes, 24,158 voted no. Therefore, the charter amendment was adopted to elect the mayor and city council members by the ranked choice voting method. I do want to make that clear. This applies only to election of mayor and city council. It does not impact the way officeholders are elected for the school district, the county, state, or federal offices. The ordinance is in your packet, and it contains the following primary components. There are three other cities in Minnesota that are already using ranked choice voting for municipal elections. That would be St. Louis Park, Minneapolis, and St. Paul. The city of Minnetonka adopted it based on their November 2020 election as well, and is implementing it at the same time that we are here in the city of Bloomington. So the ordinance before you was developed by reviewing the existing ordinances in place by those other cities, speaking with staff in those cities to learn more, as well as through two conversations with the city council earlier this month. Primary components are listed here on the slide. I want to hit just a couple of highlights before we turn this over for the public hearing. One of the key issues to be decided through the ordinance process is the number of rankings permitted. So when a voter comes into the polling location or fills out their absentee ballot, how many candidates can they rank? As currently drafted, the ordinance would allow voters to rank a number of candidates equal to the total number who filed for office, up to a maximum of six. And it must provide a voter with the opportunity to vote for a write-in candidate at any of the ranking positions. So one of the key factors to, practical factors to consider when doing this and deciding the number of rankings to be permitted, is what can we fit on our ballots? So obviously, we are a city in Hennepin County, and our election equipment is determined by the county. So we look most closely to Minneapolis and St. Louis Park on this, as they are fellow Hennepin County cities, and they use the same voting equipment that we do. The other factor at play in the layout of the ballot is the number of candidates who file for office. Over the last 20 years here in Bloomington, we have had anywhere from three to five candidates file for various mayoral and city council seats. So the most we've ever had file in the last 20 years, at least, is five. But there is no limit on the number that can file, and we can't guarantee that that maximum of five will continue to be the case here in Bloomington. So as I said, as currently drafted and is previously expressed as the preference of the city council, the ordinance would allow the ranking of six candidates. I do want to show you very briefly a couple of ballots, and what they might look like. So this is a sample ballot that was mocked up for us by staff at Hennepin County, and it shows you what the layout will look like. So one of these boxes provides a choice for somebody to mark their first-choice candidate. They would come over to this middle box for their second choice, third, four, five, and six are across the bottom. As you can see, these are laid out with seven candidates for each office. And on this ballot, we can fit two races. This is mocked up to show the mayor's race at the top with seven candidates, and then a council member at large race on the bottom half of the ballot with six candidates. For the 2021 municipal election, there will be either one or two offices on each precinct's ballot here in Bloomington. Everyone will have an at-large city council seat on their ballot, and voters in District 3 and District 4 will see their district seat up for reelection. However, two years from now, we will need to be able to fit three offices on every ballot, as the office of mayor will be up for election, the other at-large council seat will be up for election, and there will be district races as well in two years. So that would mean that the, likely, we would have two offices on the front of the ballot, a third city office on the backside of the ballot, and then the school board races on the backside of the ballot as well. And that assumes that we have six to seven candidates that would be, have filed for office. If we get more than that, this is a sample ballot that shows, I believe there's eight or nine candidates in each office on this. You can see where the first, six rankings for the first office fit, six or seven rankings for the second office, but then we run out of space at the bottom to get them all in. So the number of candidates who file for office is not something that the city or city staff have any control over. So this would be a risk of going with the six rankings. And it's my understanding that this is a primary reason why the cities of Minneapolis and St. Louis Park have gone with a limit of only ranking three candidates. They've looked at their history of office filers and how many races they need to fit on the ballot, so. Another issue that has been discussed as we have worked through this process is the threshold. And this would be the number of votes someone needs to get in order to be elected. As currently drafted, our ordinance contains two thresholds. They are the same two thresholds that the other cities in Minnesota who use ranked choice voting have. The first is called the maximum possible threshold. This threshold is in play on election night, when we receive the tallies of first-choice votes from our electronic ballot counters in the precincts and add in our absentees. So this would take the total number of ballots cast in the election, divide it by two, and add one. When we proceed to the tabulation rounds, so if no one reaches that maximum possible threshold based on election night results, we would then proceed to tabulation rounds, where the threshold would become the total votes cast for the office. So it is not unusual for voters to vote for some offices on the ballot and not others. Or occasionally, we get blank ballots fed into the ballot machines by a voter that decides not to cast any vote, or some other way that the ballot cannot be counted. So this would be the threshold. This threshold holds steady throughout each of the tabulation rounds, as it is currently drafted. And a resident that was commenting by email earlier named this sort of a static threshold, which means regardless of how many tabulation rounds it takes to yield a winner, the threshold does not change. The alternative to that would be to have a dynamic threshold, which means with each round, we would count the total votes cast or counted in that round. As you move through the rounds of ranked choice voting, it is likely that you will come across exhausted ballots, where the voter has not voted for anybody who still remains in the race. As the number of exhausted ballots goes up, the threshold would go down slightly if you used a dynamic threshold calculation. So that is a policy issue for the city council to decide. We've had a little bit of conversation about write-in candidates. The other Minnesota cities who use ranked choice voting require write-in candidates to register with the city clerk's office at least seven days prior to the election in order to have votes for them tabulated. This is currently state law for all county, state, and federal offices, even though they do not use ranked choice voting. There is still this pre-registration requirement for write-in votes to be counted. However, at the council's direction, this language was removed from the draft ordinance here in Bloomington. So as it's currently presented, write-in votes for all write-in candidates would be counted. Two more issues, recounts. The ordinance addresses when recounts would be publicly funded versus when they would have to be paid for by the candidate. There is a state statute that sets the threshold for when a publicly funded recount is available. In our case, it would likely be one-half of 1%. I say likely, because it depends on the number of voters who turn out in the election. Based on our historical turnout in municipal year elections, I think we would fall into this one-half of 1% category. As currently drafted, the ordinance would provide a publicly funded recount to any candidate who's eliminated at any point in the tabulation, as long as the vote difference falls within the percentage specified by law. So if someone was knocked out in, say, the third round of tabulation, and that resulted in them coming in fifth in the election, if the difference between that candidate who is knocked out and the one that continues falls within that threshold, they would get a publicly funded recount if they requested one, as is currently drafted. This is different than other ranked choice voting cities who limit the publicly funded recounts to the candidate who comes in second or is eliminated in the last round of the process. And last but not least, post-election review. This is something that's been in each draft of the ordinance that the council has seen, although we haven't had any discussion about it. And we did make some changes between last week's council discussion and the draft that was published for the public hearing. The post-election review is intended to be a check or an audit for the tabulation results. And so as currently drafted, it calls for a hand count of all ballots cast for one district seat for the city council, assuming we have a district race that has gone into tabulation rounds, and that our initial tabulation method was not a hand count. If we have more seats than that, that went into tabulation rounds, we would select by lot, or basically flip a coin. If we do not have any district seats that went into tabulation rounds, we would look to see if we had a citywide seat that went into tabulation rounds, and we would do the post-election review on that. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor, for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have, or any issues that come up after we receive public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Council, questions or comments on this as we head into the public hearing on this? Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, I just wanted to be clear on this. If this were to get voted down, we would still have ranked choice voting. I think there may be some confusion out there. I know there were some signs that were maybe placed on the building out there. But I just want to clarify that for folks, and then also just, if you could clarify what this public comment period is about and what we'd be discussing, just so the folks are clear as to what we're talking about during the public comment period.
Absolutely, councilmember Loman, and that was on the list of things that I wanted to talk about. This, obviously, voters in Bloomington approved ranked choice voting last November. Approved it by an acceptable margin, and it has become what we're going to be using here in the city of Bloomington for municipal elections. That's not what the discussion is tonight. The discussion tonight is not about the merits of ranked choice voting, the pros and the cons of ranked choice voting, any of those things. What we're talking about tonight is the ordinance that we are putting together to implement ranked choice voting. And Ms. Wilson laid it out very nicely, the things that, the general things that I would like to hear comment from the council, but also from members of the general public. Things like the number of rankings that would be allowed, the threshold, how to handle write-in candidacies, the recounts, the post-election review, things specifically in the ordinance that we're talking about tonight. As we get into the public hearing here, we won't be listening to callers calling in who have an opinion one way or another whether or not ranked choice voting is good or bad. That's not what this public hearing is about. There was that opportunity for the community-wide debate last November, and that's happened. That's over. We're moving on, we're trying to get the implementation process in place right now. And so if callers call in and want to talk about whether they like ranked choice voting, or the merits of ranked choice voting, or the negative side of ranked choice voting, I'm going to ask the caller to stop, to see if they have any comments specifically to the ordinance. And if they do not, we're going to move on to the next caller, because we're not talking about the merits of ranked choice voting tonight. Does that answer your question, councilmember Loman?
That's perfect. I just think, I want folks to be clear about what we're talking about tonight. Thank you, that's very clear.
Absolutely. Council, any additional questions or questions of Ms. Wilson on the slide she brought forward, or any of the things that we've talked about over the past couple of weeks regarding these issues? I do not see any. So what I would like to do now is open the public hearing assigned to item 7.2, which is a public hearing to discuss the ordinance to implement ranked choice voting for municipal elections. And a couple of things. As I said, we're going to, we're going to limit the comments to the comments regarding the ordinance itself. Each caller is going to be limited to three minutes of comments, as per our rules of procedure. And what I would like to do is, as you ask questions, I know that staff is going to be taking the questions down, is going to be pulling all the information together. We will answer questions at the end of the public hearing, rather than trying to one-off each question as they come out from each individual caller. I don't want necessarily a back and forth. I want a question to be asked, staff have the opportunity to research if necessary, pull the information together if necessary, and we'll answer those questions at the end of the public hearing here. And same is true with the council. If you have additional questions, we'll save that to the end, and we'll have the questions from the council as well after we hear the public hearing, and then we'll bring it to the staff for information. Now, that being said, I do see councilmember Nelson with his hand up. Do you have a question, councilmember Nelson? Do you have a question, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I did have a question of clarification, if that's all right, I can wait.
Absolutely, if you need to be clarified on something, please.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Wilson had indicated that there may be an issue with ranking six candidates if all offices have six or more candidates running for election, and I just wanted to make sure I understood that a little bit better, and if that problem still existed, if we say did five candidate rankings or something like that.
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, thank you for the question. The way the ballots need to be laid out for Hennepin County is we have the three columns. So you want to work in increments of three. So either having three acrossed or six acrossed, or I'm not really suggesting this, but nine acrossed works with the ballot layout. Doing four acrossed, I don't think really solves our problem, or four rankings, excuse me, doesn't really solve our problem, because we still need that second row to accommodate the fourth choice. If we did continue to have rankings of six candidates and we had a large number of candidates filing for each office, the solution to that is to have a two-page ballot. And when I say a two-page ballot, I mean physically two pieces of paper. To us, a one-page ballot is the front and the backside of a ballot, which is very common here in Minnesota. We have those a lot, but we would actually have a multi-page ballot. It does increase the cost and possibly a little bit of complexity in administering the election, but it is legally permissible to have a multi-page ballot.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Council, any other additional questions or clarification from Ms. Wilson? If not, I would like to open the public hearing here. And as I said, we're going to limit, limit comments to three minutes each and to the topics at hand, not to the merits of ranked choice voting in general. And if you could, callers, if you could, as you come on, if you could repeat your name, just so we have it clearly and for the record, and we have it officially for the record, it just makes it easier as we, as we do the minutes here and make sure that we have official and accurate names as you come on. So, Ms. Wilson, public hearing on item 7.2.
Abigail, we are ready for callers on Agenda Item 7.2, the public hearing on ranked choice voting.
And if you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone.
Abigail, I beg your pardon. We had a couple of callers that registered in advance, so I didn't want to ask for a couple of specific callers first. The first preregistered speaker we have is Lynn Lundberg. Do you have Lynn Lundberg on the line?
There is, there is no Lynn Lundberg on the line.
Okay. The second person we have preregistered is Andrew Thule.
Andrew Thule already disconnected his line earlier.
He did, okay. And then the third person we had preregistered is Laura Calboni.
And one moment, please. Laura Calboni, your line is now open.
Thank you, can everyone hear me?
We can indeed, good evening, welcome, thanks for being here tonight. And again, if you could repeat your name and then start on in.
Thank you. Great, so my name is Laura Calboni. I live here in Bloomington, and I help organize the efforts to bring ranked choice voting to our city. I'm thrilled that Bloomington voters chose to adopt ranked choice voting, and I look forward to using it starting this year. Now, as far as the ordinance and how Bloomington conducts RCV elections, I just wanted to share some recommendations based on the experiences of other cities already using ranked choice voting. So regarding the number of rankings, research has found that allowing up to six rankings gives voters the opportunity to express their full preference and minimizes ballots that may get exhausted. So I know there's been some talk about ballot design tonight, too. So I guess we'd encourage you to indicate up to six rankings in the ordinance, so that could allow some flexibility if the ballot design or something else prevents more than three rankings temporarily. Regarding write-ins, the ordinances for all RCV cities in Minnesota require write-in candidates to preregister before Election Day in order to have votes for them recorded as individuals. That pre-registration gives the election officials time to establish the identity and eligibility of the write-in candidates. And I just think, you know, because of the desire for timely election results, we recommend that our ordinance do the same. Like previously, Bloomington can still record votes for write-in candidates, but not require that that work be done before declaring the winners. Regarding recounts, standard practice for RCV city ordinances is to provide taxpayer-funded recounts according to winning thresholds and state law for the final round, not any prior rounds. The rules allow for campaigns to petition for a recount at their own expense at any round, but not at the taxpayer's expense. So we're recommending that Bloomington safeguard taxpayer dollars and follow suit with that. And regarding the winning threshold, most cities in the United States that use ranked choice voting are adjusting the winning threshold with each round of counting so that the winning candidate has a majority of the continuing valid ballots in the final round. So that means total votes cast minus those that are exhausted for lack of further rankings. It's just clearer for the public to understand the final outcome if continuing ballots instead of total ballots cast are used as the denominator. So that's why we're recommending that Bloomington adjust that denominator. I know this isn't part of the ordinance, but regarding the tabulation process, Bloomington has the same voting equipment as Minneapolis and St. Louis Park, and so we can use the same counting process, which is much faster and less expensive than a hand count process. It's fully transparent and highly accurate. The cast vote record from the voting machines can be made public, and you can't really get more transparent than that. St. Paul does a hand count because the machines that they use don't produce an exportable cast vote record. That hand count process is much more costly.
Ms. Calboni, you've exceeded your three-minute time period, but I appreciate your input, and I appreciate the information you provided us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, could we have the next caller, please, for Agenda Item 7.2, the ranked choice voting ordinance?
Again, if you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone. We have Pat Meyer, your line is now open.
Hello, my name is Pat Meyer, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Mayor, good evening, welcome, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and City Councilman, I respect the challenging job all of you have that you do for the city of Bloomington. I agree with the ranking of up to six. I hadn't thought about the ballot design issue that was brought up tonight, but I would like to see it rank up to six. And so that's my preference. Writing candidates, for most of the voting that we do in the state of Minnesota, you have to kind of preregister, and I don't, if you want to hold the office and you can check to make sure that they're an actual Bloomington resident, et cetera, I don't, I don't find that onerous. So I would suggest that you ask candidates to preregister seven days ahead of time to ease the entire process here. The other one on the, probably the threshold thing being re-tabulated, I suppose it's because I like math, that I do think it should be re-tabulated. I've looked at how they've done this in other countries, and the, I know that it isn't done that way here in the, in Minneapolis and a few of the other cities in Hennepin County, but, but the correct way, in my mind, is to readjust the vote or the threshold based on the exhausted ballots. Because there is a, that way you always end up with the 51% or 50% plus one issue. If you choose not to change the denominator, it gets a little confusing. It's just a math problem that all of a sudden it's possible, not likely, but possible, for someone to win with less than 50% of the vote. And that's okay, it's just, it's just not my preferred choice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, please give us the next caller.
Karen Wills, your line is now open.
Hi, thank you very much, my name is Karen Wills, and I am a resident of Bloomington, 10467 Deport Road South. I've also served quite a few times as an election judge in Bloomington, and am very pleased to hear about the ordinance moving forward to implement an orderly and appropriate system for ranked choice voting in our city. I would briefly second the recommendations that Laura Calboni has made, particularly in support of the dynamic threshold approach, and, and for some sort of pre-registration system for write-in candidates to minimize the number of, of, you know, sort of last-minute facetious additions that we sometimes see. And finally, the one thing that I have not seen in the ordinance that I would love to hear more about at some point, not necessarily tonight, but going forward, is provisions for people with disabilities. And I know that Bloomington does a good job of that, but as we move towards ranked choice voting, I work a lot with people with disabilities, and I would really like to hear and learn more about options such as large print ballots and the way that the assistive machinery works with ranked choice voting ballots as we move ahead, both for people with physical and sensory disabilities and also for individuals who may need assistance, such as people who speak languages, whose first language is other than English. So thank you so much for all the work that you're doing, thank you for implementing ranked choice voting in a sensible way, and for these complex considerations. That's all.
Thank you for your call, appreciate it.
Abigail, do we, Abigail, do we have another caller?
Yes, if you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone. We have a comment from Gianna DeJao, your line is now open.
Hi, thank you, City Council, for taking my call, and I've been a resident of Bloomington for almost 30 years now, I can't believe it's been that many years, but it's been great. And regarding ranked choice voting...
Excuse me, if I could ask you, just, excuse me one second, I apologize. If you could just repeat your name, just so we have it nice and clear for our council secretary for the record, so the minutes are nice and clear.
Oh, yes, Gianna DeJao.
All right, thank you.
And, you're, sure, you're welcome. And I would prefer to rank up to six rankings for the candidates, rather than having my vote curtailed after three rankings, especially if there's five candidates on the ballot. And regarding the question about the ballot sizing, if we had to go to a two-page ballot, that would still be my preference, though based on our 20-year history, it seems unlikely. But I just want to encourage you to just stick with the six, even if we have to go with a two-page ballot, that's my preference on that. And I also agree with the other callers about having a dynamic threshold, changing the denominator to reflect the number of votes for that particular round that's being tabulated. And it's, if we had a whole bunch of people who voted in the primary and more than what voted in the general, which we've never had, but if we did, in the general election, we would still be looking at reporting the winner based on the number of people who voted in the general, not based on the people who initially voted in the primary. And so that same logic should follow through to ranked choice voting where we have the dynamic threshold, if that makes sense, my little analogy there. And, and I agree with the rest of what Laura Calboni has stated as a preference regarding the writing candidate being preregistered and recounts, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeJao, appreciate it. Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, Abigail, do we have another caller?
Yes, we have Andrew Thule, your line is now open.
Hello, Council Mayor and City Manager. I'm calling in tonight to discuss basically the three options of voting being considered by the council. The first one is hand counting, feels most responsible way, allowing a voter to obviously write in the ballot. This method of counting will need all parties at the table, obviously, for counting. The second looks like it uses an Excel spreadsheet and is subject to human or software errors. I don't really think that one's good. The third is the RCV tabulator software, and is expensive and subject to fraud, but is most preferred by most cities. This should have been carefully planned and communicated before Bloomington was forced to vote on RCV. I'm hoping that we'll have a city clerk in place whose responsibility will be to oversee that RCV runs smoothly in Bloomington. Since the city and supporters of ranked choice voting believe that more choice is more voice for the voters, everyone should be able to rank all candidates, not just a few, to put a limit on the ranking opportunities of the voter, is antithetical to the whole reason voters supported ranked choice voting in the first place. And it would be no different than our current primary system of limiting only two or three choices per race. In my research, I've found ranked choice voting to be more expensive than the plurality system. And I know the assistant city managers mentioned, you know, possible two-ballot page, you know, could be obviously more costly. The education needed, software and human capital to implement are not money-saving. Like I said, I've done research within other cities, and it actually has costed quite a bit more. In conclusion, I want to go on record here tonight saying that RCV will not be a money-saving for Bloomington, it will be more expensive and confusing.
Thank you, Mr. Thule, we're not going to rehash that, we talked about that, that was the whole discussion in the past, but I appreciate, I appreciate your other comments.
You can let me say that.
Does it have to do with the ordinance that we're considering this evening?
Sorry, Andrew Thule disconnected his line.
Abigail, do we have another caller?
We have Lynn Lundberg, your line is now open.
Hello, my apologies that I wasn't on earlier. My name is Lynn Lundberg, and I'm a longtime Bloomington resident. I'm just delighted that Bloomington voters chose to use RCV to vote for future mayors and city council members, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to provide input into how to make RCV as successful as possible. I feel very strongly that council should revisit the seven-day declaration requirement for write-ins. This requirement allows for candidate eligibility and identification to be determined, and it is less time-consuming for election officials. Boy, there's no need for staff to spend time and energy on votes for Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck or candidates who don't even live in Bloomington. Next, I feel strongly that the threshold should be recalculated. If the threshold is recalculated for each round excluding exhausted ballots, then the winning candidate will always have a majority of votes continuing in that round, and I think that's more clear to voters. I am excited to vote this November using RCV, and it'll be nice to focus on issues instead of only voting for a party. Thanks for listening.
And thank you for your comments.
Abigail, could you give us the next caller, please?
There are no further comments on this agenda, please proceed.
Could we do, Abigail, could we do one more check and make sure that there is no one else?
And if you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone. We have Russell Bernison, your line is now open.
Good evening, Mr. Bernison, how are you this evening?
Good, I tried to get in before and let me in, so at least I'm in this time.
Glad to, glad to have you, good evening, go ahead.
On, on 7.2, I think, in, correct me if I'm wrong, and you can discuss it later, if you move from the total number of ballots counted for the election, and then you eliminate some and you change the dynamic, the number down to the dynamic number, which I understand is then the ballots that are left to be counted, that's going to disenfranchise some voters, correct? You can answer that later. I think you got to keep that denominator at the total number of votes, and we should have to have 51% in, or 50 plus one in order to get somebody elected, not like in Minneapolis where they had a 36%, and he was elected to the council. That's my comments at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Bernison. Are there any additional callers, Ms. Wilson?
Abigail, do we have other callers?
And again, if you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone. And there are no further comments on this agenda, please proceed.
I'm assuming that folks who are on hold can indeed hear this, and, so I'm going to give it another half, half a minute here to make sure that we're not missing anybody, that we've got everybody who wants to speak on this. So the... So, the, the rule is if you want to speak, hit star one right now for item 7.2. I know that, as I said, folks who are on hold can hear the rest of the meeting around them. So, now would be the time to do it. And, um, if we can make one final call, Abigail, if we can make one final call to see if there are any callers who wish to speak to item 7.2 on tonight's agenda.
Sure. Again, if you would like to comment on the agenda item, please press star one on your telephone. And there are still no comments on the agenda. Please proceed.
Abigail, do we have any callers on the line who are holding right now?
We just got a line. One moment, please. I'm sorry, but the line disconnected.
All right. Well, thank you all for your patience. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that we, we didn't miss anybody here, that, uh, this is, this is an issue I know that folks want to talk about and have good input on, and, uh, but it does sound as though that, uh, we have exhausted the callers online right now who are looking to speak on this issue. So with that, I would like to, uh, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing this evening.
So moved. Coulter?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember, was it Carter, I believe, I heard? All right. To close tonight's public hearing on item 7.2. Any further discussion by the council? Hearing none? Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. So, uh, what I would like to do first, and I know there were mostly comments, but I think there were at least a couple of questions. Uh, Ms. Wilson, I think Mr. Bernison had a question, um, about the, the, the static versus dynamic threshold, and I, I think I heard at least a couple of other questions. Do you have, do you have answers or responses to some of those questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, taking them in the order that I noted them down, Mr. Andrew Thule made the statement that the universal tabulator was expensive and subject to fraud. The universal tabulator would be no cost to the city for the software. Um, so I disagree with the statement that it would be expensive, and it has been tested against the voluntary voting system guidelines, which are federal guidelines for voting systems, um, and it has been found to be acceptable. It's also been approved by several state, um, election offices for use. Mr. Andrew, Mr. Thule also made the statement that he hoped we would have a new city clerk in place, and I am very pleased to announce that we have hired a new city clerk. Uh, Ms. Christina Scipione will be joining our staff as our next city clerk on Monday, April 12th. Christina has been the city clerk in the city of Eagan for the last 10 years, and we are very fortunate to have her joining our staff. Mr. Bernison asked about, um, that if you change the tabulation threshold, does that disenfranchise voters? Um, my answer to that would be no, it does not. What changes, what would change the tabulation threshold is either that somebody left their ballot blank for that particular race, so that voter has taken themselves out of casting a vote for that race. It would be nothing we were doing that, that disenfranchises because there's nothing there to count on that ballot. Um, and the same is true on an exhausted ballot. We would have nothing to count. And so to me, the definition of disenfranchising somebody is either not giving them access to the ballot or not counting their ballot once they have marked it. And neither of those would be the case, um, regardless of which, um, threshold method we, we use. So, um, that would be my response to that. Those are the questions I noted. Karen Wills, um, said she was interested in more information about provisions for people with disabilities and mentioned assistive voting technologies, and I just want to commit that that is coming. We are actually getting, we have existing assistive voting technologies, and they're being swapped out by Hennepin County for all cities. This is completely separate from us going to ranked choice voting, but we are getting new assistive devices, um, in the coming months. And once we have them, we will make sure that they're available as part of mock elections and available for people to try and get more information out about them. Um, so, those are the items that I had noted to, um, provide feedback on, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I might have missed or council has as a result of the testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Council, we're, I, I, I see Councilmember Coulter's hand up. I, I don't know if this is an additional question, but I'll, but I'll ask the question. Do, does anyone have additional questions regarding the questions that callers asked? Or any additional questions to Ms. Wilson regarding the callers' questions? And then we'll get to your specific questions. Uh, Councilmember Lowman? Or Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Coulter? I, I saw your hand up fairly early, and I'm not sure exactly what direction your question is, uh, where it falls here.
It's just a, a question of clarification related to one of the questions that, that one of the callers asked.
Okay, please, if you could. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, just to clarify on this question of the, the threshold, um, changing the, using a, a dynamic threshold would not change the number of votes that are counted or anything like that, correct? It just, it, it would, it would change how, it would change who, who and when is declared ultimately the winner and how those results are reported. Is that correct?
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, it would change the threshold that you need to be declared the winner. Um, I think it's hard to say whether or not it would somehow change who is declared the winter, the winner. Um, I think it's more likely we might get to a winner after, you know, a fewer number of rounds, because the threshold would reflect the number of active votes that we are counting at that point and not requiring them to surpass a majority of all of the votes. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that you answered the question I meant to ask, not the question I actually asked. So, thank, thank you for doing that.
Councilmember Lowman?
So, I, I got two, and they're on the, on the questions that were asked, uh, by, uh, earlier callers here. I'll, I'll just start with the one that, uh, Councilmember Coulter kind of, uh, put forward. Um, so, uh, in terms of how it's reported, um, when we look at that dynamic and static, um, and how, or how we look at it in our current process, would there be a difference in terms of how that number is identified when they, you know, when it goes to Secretary of State? What, what does that look like? Is it, is it going to be different? Would it differ among those three different options, the dynamic, the static, or our, let's call it the previous, uh, uh, process that we used to use?
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, as I think through that, I do not believe that it would change. We still, in every round, we would account for every single ballot, and you would have votes for candidates, and then you would, um, the presumption is that if you go into multiple rounds, you increase the number of exhausted ballots, ballots where the only people voted for have been eliminated. Um, that's not a guarantee, it's just sort of the, the theory of it, that the more rounds you go, the more likely you are to run across exhausted ballots. But you would see the number of exhausted ballots recorded going up, so that all of our ballots still tally to the same number after each and every round. That's one of the basic principles of, of balancing the tabulation. So, my expectation is that it would not change what we report as final election results.
In our previous system, we had the exhausted, uh, line, overvote, undervote, and then whatever the, the folks. So, basically what I'm hearing you say is that that's what we'd see kind of going forward, there'd be no difference with static dynamic or with respect to, uh, our previous system, how, how it's counted. I think that's, that's pretty clear to me. Let me ask the other question, unless there's something different about that one?
No, go ahead.
Uh, so then, um, I, I guess, uh, one of the questions was asked that, you know, that the, uh, the voting tabulator would be, uh, they thought that that might be more expensive. What, what, what about with respect to training? Uh, if we were to compare the training with hand counting and that tabulator, would those be similar? Or if I have the Excel spreadsheet, just help me understand where the cost kind of lies in there? I mean, certainly for the system is nothing, but each of these systems have a cost. If we compare all three of them, what, what, what do we think that we would estimate that might look like?
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, my estimate would be that the training to utilize the tabulator would be the least costly, because it takes the fewest people to operate the tabulator, to put in the data and draw out the results. So we would have fewer people that need to be trained. Um, and, um, the tabulator itself accounts for a number of variations in what ifs, if this happens, then this type of thing. And so again, I think there's less training involved for, in its, instead of less training, I guess I should think of it as training for a smaller group of election staff. As we move up to the, um, spreadsheet method that Minneapolis and St. Louis Park use, I would say that would be second in terms of the training costs. And again, that's based on estimated hours of, or expected hours of training, like sort of a degree of magnitude, and the number of staff we would need to train to make that system go. Hand counting, um, probably wouldn't take very many hours of training, it, but it, we would need a larger number of people to carry out a hand count, and therefore we would be training a larger number of people. Does that answer your question?
Just to be clear, uh, we've had that hand count because of the, the labor intensity, uh, intensivity, and also the amount of, uh, folks it would, uh, cost. Then it would be that Excel spreadsheet, and then finally the, the last one, the, uh, the, um, universal tabulator, just so everyone's clear. Thank you for that, uh, in terms of your estimates, and certainly circumstances can change, that could do that, we can only do estimates right now. I appreciate that clarity.
Council, any additional questions? Uh, either questions about the questions from callers or questions on our own here? And while you're thinking about those, because we have closed the public hearing, and I know we do not have any additional public hearings this evening, Ms. Wilson, if you could let Abigail go, so we can let her move on with her evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Abigail, thank you for your assistance tonight. We are all done with the public comment portions of our meeting, so you can go ahead and disconnect the line.
Okay, uh, no problem, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Have a great evening. You too. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Abigail. Thanks for your help. Council, additional questions? I see Councilmember Lowman's hand up. Councilmember Lowman?
I guess, Mayor, I have no questions. I'm ready to get into, uh, some things that I'd like to, uh, look at in terms of this, this motion. So, uh, if we're ready for that, uh-
I, I think that, that's next on the list here, is I want to get into the council discussion on all this. We do have a few items that were, uh, that we haven't quite resolved. I know there's continuing discussion on a few things. So I see Councilmember Lowman's hand up. I see Councilmember Beloga, and, uh, I saw one additional hand as well, but my screen is in the way right now. So we'll start with Councilmember Lowman, Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Lowman?
So, just to be, uh, uh, quick and succinct with this, um, I'm open to, uh, shifting that write-in, uh, process, uh, if we want to do that. I'd go either way, um, on that. If folks feel strongly about that, I'm, I'm open to go one way or the other. Uh, in terms of the threshold, I would be interested in trying to consider that, uh, dynamic, especially based on, uh, the commentary we got here, also the emails we received, um, uh, in my, my mailbox, uh, and, uh, I'd be open to trying that dynamic piece out, uh, with that. Other than that, I think that the way that the, uh, uh, the way it is written, I'm ready to support it as written with those, uh, those possible changes. Thank you.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, page 34 of the fifth bullet item, it speaks to the, uh, provision of, uh, going through the process, and should there be a skipped rank, overvote, or repeat candidate, I would just like to make sure that I'm interpreting what's written clearly and correctly. So if Ms. Wilson could take us through and possibly give us an example or two?
Certainly.
Uh, actually, so just so folks know what we're talking about here, there's a, there was a, a bullet point, just to clarify things, that said, uh, "The draft ordinance provides that any time a skipped ranking, overvote, or repeat candidate ranking is encountered on a ballot, that ballot shall count towards the highest continuing ranked candidate that is not a skipped ranking, overvote, or repeat candidate ranking." So, Ms. Wilson, that, that's what we're talking about. Just want everybody to be clear that's what we're talking about. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Beloga. Um, several examples that I can think of, so if we had a ballot in front of us and the voter's first choice candidate, um, had come in with the least number of votes, we, and we had eliminated that candidate, now we are going to transfer that ballot to the voter's second choice. If we look at their second choice and they have marked two people for their second choice, that's what we consider an overvote, because you're only supposed to have one candidate marked in each choice. So if they had voted for two people in their second choice, as the language is currently drafted, we would skip both of those second-choice rankings and we would go to their third choice. Assuming they had only marked one candidate for their third choice, their ballot would then be counted for that third-choice candidate. Say they voted for the first candidate, their first choice, their first choice had been eliminated, and they skipped the second choice, um, we would then also go to the third choice. Occasionally, I'm told from, um, staff that have administered these elections before, you'll have a voter who votes for the same candidate for each of their choices, right? They're really, um, want to see one particular person elected, and so they'll rank that person as their first, second, third, fourth, fifth choice. If that candidate gets, um, eliminated, because at some round they were the lowest vote getter, that ballot would become exhausted or inactivated, and it would not be counted towards anybody because the only person they had voted for on that ballot, um, is no longer a continuing candidate. So those are some of the examples that I can, um, think of, um, that cause us to have to go to the next ranking on someone's ballot, or unfortunately to, um, exhaust the ballot. It is certainly a voter's choice not to exercise every ranking that's made available to them. So say the council sticks with ranking six candidates, voters can choose to just come in and vote for one, they can choose to come in and vote for three, or four, or five, and skip their final rankings if they so choose. Um, we would count their ballot until it became exhausted, and then it would be added to the pile of inactive ballots. I hope that answers your question. If there's a specific scenario that you are contemplating, I'd be happy to try to address that.
Uh, Ms. Wilson, thank you. I, uh, I had not thought about, uh, what, you know, a couple of the examples that you pointed out, so, uh, thank you for that. Uh, the, um, the software, both which Hennepin County uses and the one that we're contemplating, can handle the examples that, uh, you used, uh, moving from, uh, the second to the third vote, for instance, when there is an overvote in the second.
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, yes, it can.
Excellent. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I am going to hit on a note that I, I hit before, but we, you know, we heard some more comments and questions about it, and I do, I do want to go back and explore this question of the dynamic threshold. Um, I think, you know, for myself, the reason I prefer it is, is it just seems to be a sort of clear result. I think it, it's clear to staff, it's clear to the broader public. I think it just, it's a little bit more transparent in that way. Um, and I, you know, I, I was thinking about it, and the caller who mentioned that it, it's almost akin to sort of counting votes cast in the primary as though they were cast in the general election, and that's kind of how I feel about it, too. That's sort of the, the concept with ranked choice voting, right? Is that it's, it's essentially multiple elections sort of hold, held at once. Um, so I, I would really like us to use a, a dynamic threshold, um, and I, you know, I have the exact changes that would need to be made written down in front of me, but I trust staff to handle that. I will point out, because my mom is a math teacher, technically we would be changing the numerator in our definition of threshold. Folks have referred to the denominator. Uh, the denominator is always two. We would be changing the numerator, just to clarify that. But I, I really think the dynamic threshold is the way to go.
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I also would like to see us consider-
So I also would like to see us consider the dynamic threshold instead. It's clear to me that every ballot is being counted, and really, we're just changing the numerator. Thank you, Nathan. To reflect the actual votes, and which I think is much more simple. And then I also would like to, I would like to see us require writing candidates to register seven days ahead of time. I think it makes sense to align with state law. Sorry, that's bad timing. Align with what the state is doing and what other ranked-choice voting cities are doing. And then, just to, thank you, honey, to alleviate the administrative burden that would be upon those who are having to go through and validate all of those names.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just real quick, kind of two things that have been swirling in my head a little bit here. In terms of kind of the dynamic threshold approach, I do understand it is simpler, and especially coming out of our primary general system, being able to say this candidate won with 53% is what folks have gotten used to seeing. I do think there is some value, though. If somebody wins with less than 50% of the vote after all of these rounds and kind of voter opinion coalesces through first, second, third choice, that in and of itself is a statement from residents. If we have a lot of candidates and it takes many rounds for that to coalesce, and it turns out to be a victory with 42%, and that's how the residents coalesced, I think that's a statement in and of itself and a voice that I think folks would understand, especially as we're educating them about the process, what that means when they see it in the sun current. And additionally, I do understand it is, I'm sure, an administrative headache and adds a lot of steps. But if residents all get together, and are a decent number of them, and don't like their choices, and a huge percentage write in Mickey Mouse, and Mickey Mouse happens to get to the second, third round of tabulation, I also think that's a strong statement that residents could make, have the right to make. And while certainly that's a headache, and Mickey Mouse isn't going to win, I think he's in California and Florida most of the time. It's something at least to recognize. So anyway, it's not a hill I'm going to take my last stand on by any means, but I think it's important to recognize that sometimes those headaches on the tabulation side are important to recognize, the opinions folks want to register.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson, I saw your hand up earlier, and then it came down. Did you want to chime in or anything you wanted to add to this?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing of value to add at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Just for, you know, from my own two cents, I do think, I like the, even though it could potentially push us to a couple of ballot pages, I like to the up to six, ranking up to six candidates, because I think it gives just enough flexibility. And the language of up to six, given our past where we rarely see more than five candidates for an office, and frankly, I don't know that we would see many more. So I think up to six makes sense. I'm also leaning now toward the pre-register for write-ins, simply because of the simplicity of it, because of the clerical issues around it, to try and make sure that if people are receiving votes, we know exactly who they are, that the John Smith of, the John Smith who's being voted for is the John Smith that everybody is wanting. It's the same person, and we know who that might be. And I think it also just makes the tabulation that much simpler, especially as we go into a new process like this. I think to make sure that we eliminate as much complexity as possible, and I think this would do just that. We always see plenty of one or two, or, you know, at most, three names get write-in votes, you know, or a number of people get write-in votes, but they get no more than one or two or three. And so I think this just makes things simpler for our city staff. Also, agree completely, hadn't even thought about the provisions for people with disabilities. So thanks to Ms. Wilson for bringing that up, because that was something that I hadn't considered. And I think that's a very good point, especially as we are doing something different. And it's a challenge many times as it is to make sure that we get the correct information and make this as open and as doable as possible for everyone. And I just want to make sure that we keep that in front of mind as well. So now I do see Councilmember Nelson's hand up. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Not sure it'll be valuable at this time either, but I do have a question about the write-in portion of it. I know one of the concerns that I've heard of the registration is what happens, you know, in the last week if for some reason someone isn't able to continue on as a candidate, something bad happened to them or something like that. And there was a sort of a number of people that wanted somebody else to come in, but they didn't have the time within that seven days to register. And then, so that's one question. The other separate question is, even if we have that registration requirement, we still count all those votes, correct? We still count and say, just like we did in the past where all the people got the things, no matter what, someone who votes for someone, whether it be Donald Duck or Mickey Mouse, or a person in the community that you think would be well adept at serving on the city council, that vote will count, correct?
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Nelson, if I may take your questions in reverse order. The ballots that contain a vote in that round, if we get to a vote on a ballot, and it is for somebody that's not a filed candidate, meaning their name's not pre-printed on the ballot, and they're not a registered write-in candidate, it would go in a pile for other write-in voters. So you would not see the level of detail in the tabulation that you saw, for example, at the conclusion of the 2019 election, where you could see each and every write-in vote that was cast. That's not, I had had a couple of questions this week that, oh, I see no write-ins on your website. We don't publish the write-ins on the website currently, but they are in the official record. They're in what was brought to the council to canvass the election results in November of 2019. So I don't think it's accurate to say that it wouldn't be any different. It would be different because we would not take the time to tabulate each and every vote. We would be looking for the names of the write-in candidates who had preregistered. So we would be reviewing ballots, looking for the names of those candidates. As far as your first question, I'm not an expert on that, but it's my understanding that state law provides for what happens if somebody were to, you know, tragically die or say, become disabled in, you know, the lead-up to an election. So I believe we would defer to that for a candidate who's already on the ballot that people might vote for. But at its core, you're correct. It prevents sort of a last-minute, you know, 72 hours before the election, you know, an effort to elect a particular person, under any circumstance, whether that's because another candidate is unable to serve or something like that. To get any further into that, I'd have to do a little more research on what happens when somebody's printed on a local ballot and becomes unable to serve. We have unfortunately not run into that situation, and so I would need to do some research on that.
Just a quick comment thought there. I mean, the obvious difference is city council elections are nonpartisan versus a lot of those state elections where that may come more into play. And I would hope that we continue to have it that way.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Wilson, if I understood correctly about the seven-day registration period, you had mentioned that if those candidates were registered, then they would appear on the ballot. Did I understand that correctly, or did I misunderstand?
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, we have a miscommunication. I'm not sure if it's your understanding or mine. But no, the seven days in advance, the ballots are already printed. We've been running early voting and doing absentee balloting for weeks at that point. The purpose of the seven days in advance is that we would have a proper spelling. We would have a residence for that voter. We would know that they were the appropriate age and resided in the district they were running in. So we would obtain that information, but it would not appear on the ballot. The ballots are printed and already in use by that point.
And that was the point of my question, is that we have early voting now, you know, essentially. And I couldn't see how that could occur, that if you registered seven days, you'd become on the ballot. So thanks for that clarification. I'm still very much of an advocate for counting each vote, and I won't repeat what Councilmember Martin said, which I concur totally with. I believe that votes are sacred. It's why, it's what distinguishes this country from others around the world to a great extent. And we're the light of democracy, and we need to hold that precious with each and every vote. Between now and, I believe it's the first week of May, something of that nature, is when the Charter Commission meets. And I would also feel it would be good for the Charter Commission to weigh in once again on the subject of, do we count or not count write-in ballots? And who can be a write-in? Because, again, the Charter Commission has viewed this a couple of times and came in very strongly in favor of having all ballots counted for write-ins irrespective of registration in advance. So thank you much.
Councilmember Nelson, is that a new hand again? I saw it go up and down a couple of times. So is that a new hand again?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It is a new hand. I just was wondering, a clarification. Assistant City Manager Wilson had indicated something about misspellings. And could you clarify for me how those are currently handled? If someone's a write-in candidate versus how they would be handled? Is there any difference? You know, as an example, my name is Sean. Some people spell it the way I spell it. Some people spell it S-E-A-N. You know, there's a number of variations that clearly indicate the same thing. And I guess more central to my question, does the registration requirement impact your ability to determine voter intent in any different way than if we don't have it?
Ms. Wilson?
We determine voter intent. We don't go straight by spelling, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Nelson. So if we had a write-in, and we can tell who it's for, you know, then it gets counted for that person. I think the one way I could foresee the registration as having an advantage for us is if we had somebody with a particularly long or unique name, and they had preregistered, and we had their name typed, we might be able to recognize it better when reading a handwritten absentee, you know? Because we do struggle to read handwriting and decide who it goes for. But sometimes you see a name, and it's got some key features to it as we're trying to determine voter intent, I think. But that's, I would expect that would be a pretty rare occurrence. I think in general, it would have minimal impact on that aspect, as you've asked the question.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Wilson, is there anything magical with the seven days on that seven-day registration? So if we were to put same day, does that make a difference, three day? Help me understand why the seven days? Do we do it one day? Could we do it the day after? I mean, what? Help me understand. What are we doing there with that registration piece?
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I mean, the honest answer of why we had, our first draft had referenced seven days is the old, that's the way everybody does it. It is consistent with the language of the other cities and with the language of state law. So I guess I would argue that if you're going to require an advanced registration, that we should require it in the same way that's required for county offices and state offices and so on. It makes it consistent. Is it feasible that we could do it in, you know, four days or something? Very possibly. I would be really hesitant to run it right up to the day before an election. That is a very, very busy time in the city clerk's office. And it doesn't give us much time to answer questions or verify an address or something.
So the administration of it, if it was like the day before or the same day, might be impossible to try to even execute that. Seven days is just, you know, administrative way to get around that. Okay? So there's nothing magical with seven days. But thank you for clarifying that.
All right, counsel, here is what I would like to do. We've got a few items that we had, we've talked about a number of items here, and I would like to see if I can get consensus on the things that we're in agreement on. And then perhaps either continue to chew on what we've heard from public comment this evening and the public hearing, or to continue to work our way through some of these at a subsequent meeting. Because I just want to make sure that we get things, I want to do the things that we can agree on tonight. So we had talked about the number of candidates that could be ranked. And we heard the pros and cons of six, maybe pushing it to a second ballot page, maybe not. We have it written as six. Do we have general comfort and agreement with six? Or do we want to talk about that a bit? See a couple of thumbs up? Okay, if we're comfortable with six, I am comfortable with six. I also want to stress, and I heard this from at least one resident this week. So the number of six that we keep talking about, this is the number of people that can be ranked. That isn't the limit number of people who can be on the ballot. If 15 people pay the registration fee, get the signatures they need, we'll have 15 names on that ballot. It's just a matter of you can only rank up to six just because of the way we want to administer the election. So in no way are we limiting the number of names that can actually be on the ballot. We're simply limiting the number of numbers, names that you can actually rank per round. So just wanted to clarify that. And that was brought forward by somebody who had heard a couple of things from a couple of other folks, and I had heard it from a couple as well. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. The question about the threshold, and thank you for the numerator-denominator clarification from Councilmember Coulter. I always remember it was denominator was down, you know, the D-D kind of thing. So that was the lower number. That's how I always remembered it. And that's about the extent of what I remember from any kind of math class that I ever took. So from the threshold standpoint, I've heard a couple of things, a couple of different ways, but it seems to me that we're hearing that the notion of a dynamic threshold seems to be the way to go. Am I correct in hearing that from councilmembers? Okay, I'm seeing thumbs up. So the dynamic threshold, and I'm clear in when I say that, Ms. Wilson, that's clear what we're talking about when I say dynamic threshold?
Yes, staff understands.
Perfect, thank you. I think we're kind of stuck on the write-in candidates, the notions of that. Maybe we can come back to that, and we can consider that. The recounts, personally, I like how the ordinance is written right now regarding recounts. The fact that it's tied specifically to Minnesota statutes because it has to do with the number of votes that are ultimately cast, what percentage we go to, whether it's the within a quarter percent or a half percent. It's tied directly to state statute. And I do think that makes a lot of sense in terms of recounts. We did hear from one caller that the typical way of doing it, the only recounts that are publicly paid for are in the final round. But I think I've heard from this council in the past that if the margins are within this number set forth by state statute, that this council was more inclined to make it a publicly funded recount, no matter the round. Was I correct in hearing that from this group? I think we talked about that at one of the previous meetings. And if I'm talking out of school here, please let me know. All right, so I think that makes sense. The systems, I think, is still to be determined, whether, how we actually do this, because that's, I see, I think we talked last time that that necessarily didn't need to be part of the ordinance. I see it is, some of the information is part of the ordinance, but the actual nuts and bolts is not necessarily part of the ordinance. Is that correct, Ms. Wilson?
That's correct. The ordinance does not select the software or the tabulation method. It establishes the rules that our method will have to be able to accommodate.
Okay, all right. And everybody's okay with that? And then the final thing that I had written down as an item, the post-election review of tabulation of results. I think we want that. We just want to make sure that if we do a little self-audit, I think that makes perfect- We just want to make sure that if we do a little self-audit, I think that makes perfect sense. And want to see that our systems are strong and that we're doing it correctly. So that would be 3.18, the post-election. Everybody is okay with that as well, the way that that's written? And then the final one that I saw, the tied votes. So it, so the deciding by lot. I'm assuming by lot is simply a flip of the coin. Do we want to say flip of the coin or do we want to leave this ambiguous and say lot?
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Please.
We had that same discussion at the staff level. And since it is possible to have a three-way tie, a coin flip would not solve that for us. A tie by lot is simply a tie where each candidate has an equal chance of being selected or not selected. So for some stroke of things, we got to three people tied for the lowest. We would do like a pulling a number out of a hat type thing instead of a coin flip, something that would accommodate three candidates rather than two.
That makes sense. The only other thing that I had with the tied vote provision is that the tie may be resolved by lot even though some or all the candidates who have tied are not present. But I would think if, I guess if I was tied, I'd want to be there to see the, just what happens. Can you speak to that at all?
Mr. Mayor, the ordinance does provide that tabulation would pause and we would have a one-hour notice to the candidates of the, and they would know in advance that they started to be watching for that, right? If you're a candidate on the ballot and you're concerned about a tie, you're going to be keeping track of your email and your phone and so on. But otherwise, I mean, that brings tabulation to a halt. And so would you want tabulation to be halted for longer than an hour while waiting for a candidate to arrive?
Council, thoughts on that? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Would that drawing of lots or however that worked be somehow recorded or something else so that it could be reviewed in the future by that candidate that was not able to make it for whatever reason they weren't able to make it?
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. If you look at 3.13, Section B calls for there to be two witnesses who are election judges, who are members of different political parties. And it calls, it says it shall be recorded and that the media is allowed to attend. So it's a fairly public and documented process, even if one or more of the candidates themselves are not physically present.
All right, and again, it's not, this isn't a do or die provision, I don't think. But it was just something that I noticed. And I agree, I guess, if you're in the middle of a count, that the candidate would likely be aware of what's going on and would be able to react fairly quickly. So, so Council, by my, unless there's anything else, by my estimation here, the only question we have here is regarding write-in candidates. And just kind of a disagreement, I think. And I don't even know what the straw poll might be if we took it right now. What I'm going to suggest, again, to keep us moving forward here and to keep us going, is that to bring this back one final time, the first couple of meetings in April, we've got time on one of those meetings, to bring it back and to finish this discussion one way or another. And if we have to eventually get to a up-down vote on which direction we want to go with this, we can do that. But I think it gives us just another couple of weeks to think about some of the testimony that we heard tonight, to think about the implications one way or another. And ultimately, we can come back and we can make a final decision. Because it looks like that's about the only provision that we still have questions on. We still have some, I don't want to say division, disagreement on as to exactly how to handle that. Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just had one maybe idea or suggestion, if it was even possible. So I would ask Ms. Wilson to respond. Could we still, for the write-in issue, for the unregistered write-ins, could we put them in the other pile, continue the tabulation process? You know, finalize the results, but then also report out? When we do the election report, out, report out on who were the write-in candidates? Just for full transparency? Like, could that be one way to make sure that, you know, they are seen? It's transparent, but also not hold up the process kind of in that real time?
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, my first reaction to that suggestion is yes, that that should be doable. We could do that.
And I guess then my next question would be for my colleagues on council. Like, would that be something for those of you who are more hesitant to take this approach? Would that be, sit better with you if we still were reporting out on the results of who were the write-ins? But it just didn't hold up that tabulation process, if that makes sense?
I think one thing for everything, everybody to consider, Councilmember Coulter with his hand up. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm wondering, could we, is there any reason we have to adopt? I mean, I guess what I, well, maybe, let me start over. We could adopt this ordinance tonight and then come back and add in the section discussing, if it's the will of the council to, you know, add that write-in candidates have to declare, correct? Noting, I mean, of course, it would have to be noticed and all of that.
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, you could add a requirement for write-ins to register seven days in advance at a later date than adopting the ordinance. That being said, our deputy city attorney, Peter Zuniga, who's been helping with our drafting and I, to get to the dynamic threshold, we'd really like the chance to do that, not on the fly tonight, but to sort of carefully read through the ordinance. It requires a change in the definition, but it might also require some edits elsewhere in the ordinance. So we would prefer not to make that change to a dynamic threshold on the fly tonight, but to have a little time for legal and staff to bring that forward. So assuming it sounded like there was a consensus to make that change, the staff would ask that you allow us the time to make that change.
Okay, so that's good to know then. Because I guess, you know, I have made my preferences known on the whole write-in issue. It's not really the hill I want to die on. I was planning to support the ordinance anyway. But if, I mean, if it needs to come back for that issue anyway, then I'm perfectly content to have a discussion about it on a later date.
So why don't we have staff bring back, if you have to work the language a little bit regarding the dynamics piece of it? If we could get perhaps a, are two options written down, kind of yes and no? These are the two possibilities and here would be the implications. What it would mean if for a seven-day registration ahead of time and if it was not? And just if you could do the simple pros and cons for us, so we have it in front of us. And if we could come back to this, either the first or second meeting in April, decide on that. It still gives us enough time, I think, to start the education and to start all the details on this and so on. But just to make sure that we, we're all comfortable or we get to a point where we agree what we're talking about, we agree what we're voting on and we agree one way or another by an up-down vote as to which way we want to go with that. Is that doable? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Let's, yes, it is doable. And let's continue to a date certain. And the recommendation would be we continue to April 12th. All right, is everybody okay with that? April 12th? All right, let's plan on that. I think we're just about there on this, but I don't want to push through kind of a, something that we're, that we're just kind of zipping along with and don't want to just push that through. So I want to make sure that we get to April 12th and have all the information we need in front of us and make a decision then. Everybody's comfortable with that? Very good. Then I would look for a motion to continue, item 7.2, the ordinance to implement ranked choice voting for municipal elections to continue it to our April 12th meeting.
So moved, Councilmember Lowman?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue item 7.2 to our April 12th meeting. Any additional comments? Councilmember Lowman, I don't know if you were intending to put your hand up or it just kind of popped on as you were seconding. Nope, okay, good enough.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. We've got a motion and a second to continue this till April 12th. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Bloga. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. So motion carries. We'll take this up for one last time on April 12th to resolve that one final issue. Thanks so very much for the input. I think this was a very good discussion. Thanks to the folks who called in. I think it was good to hear some feedback as well as to what direction we want to go with this. Let's move on, if we could, in our agenda, item eight, which is our organizational business. And we're going to start with item 8.1, which is the 2021 work plan of our Creative Placemaking Commission. And I know our Director of Creative Placemaking, Alejandra Palenca, is here. And I think a few folks from Artistry and the Creative Placemaking Commission. So we'll just, I'll let you introduce them, Ms. Palenca, and I will turn it over to you, Ms. Palenca.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to present the Creative Placemaking Commission work plan update, including an overview of our goals, projects from 2020 and some project priorities for 2021. So I'll let my team introduce themselves and I'll start off with our partners at Artistry, Rachel.
Thanks, Ollie. Thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers. I'm Rachel Daly, Director of Visual Arts at Artistry. And also Artistry's staff liaison to the Creative Placemaking and South Loop initiatives.
Thank you, Kevin. Maybe I'll skip to Jackie and then I'll go back to Kevin, our new commission chair, Jackie.
Hello, Mayor, hello, councilmembers. I'm Jackie Rosenbusch. I'm the Chair of the Creative Placemaking Commission and a Bloomington resident.
Thank you, Jackie. Kevin, are you back on? Well, go ahead and introduce Kevin. Kevin Ramich, who is the Executive Director of Artistry, is also joining us tonight. I'll be sharing my screen. So just if you want to, just give me one second to share that.
Will do. And I'll just say welcome to all of you. Thanks for being here this evening. Thanks for sticking with us as we head later into the evening. I appreciate it.
All right, so if someone can just verbally just confirm that you can see my PowerPoint screen?
We can indeed, you're good to go.
Wonderful. All right, so this work plan is shaped by the South Loop District Creative Placemaking Plan, which was developed by the City of Bloomington in partnership with Artistry and improved by City Council in 2015. One outcome of the plan included the formation of our Creative Placemaking Commission. The commission advises the city council on using arts, design, culture and creativity to help accomplish the city's goals for change, growth and transformation of the South Loop District in a way that also builds character and quality of place in Bloomington. With that, I'll pass the next one on to Jackie.
So the South Loop Creative Placemaking Plan has a vision and goals. And they have guided our work plan strategies and project priorities. So our vision is to establish the South Loop as a distinctive destination known for welcoming people and using the arts to transform the neighborhood in a threefold way, physically, socially and culturally. And our goals include ensuring urban design excellence and transforming the built environment, animating public spaces and strengthening the social and cultural fabric, involving and empowering people who inhabit and care about the South Loop, building capacity to sustain placemaking leadership and champions, and attracting new development and fostering the creative sector through investments. Next slide. So in 2020, the commission participated in a practical visioning workshop and in which we asked ourselves, given what we know of our Creative Placemaking Plan, what elements do we want to see in the next three years as a result of our actions? From 2021 to 2023? And so these are the things we landed on. The first one was grand and colorful places to play. The second is welcoming and thriving green spaces. Walkable, engaging urban amenities. Cohesive and distinct wayfinding. Intentional and equitable engagement of stakeholders. And that the South Loop would be a safe and accessible mobility hub. So that was our what, and now we need our how. So our next step is to participate in an action planning session to determine how commissioners can be involved in implementing strategies. Thanks, Ollie, back to you.
Thanks, Jackie. So creative placemaking and public art processes and installations have the potential to uplift the neighborhood spirits, build community resilience, provide connection and hope, add to the livability factor such as property values, support the local economy and support entrepreneurs, specifically artists. Research from John Hopkins University actually indicates that the art sector's been hit harder than any other sector by the pandemic. To thrive post-pandemic, we really must continue to leverage our creative power, putting creative workers and artists to work, rebuilding, reimagining, unifying and healing communities. In addition, investing in the creative engine will accelerate the economic recovery of our community. So as you're aware, recently, the Bloomington Creative MN Report found that the arts and culture sector has a $12.1 million economic impact on the city of Bloomington. It fosters 296 full-time equivalent jobs in addition to nearly $900,000 in government revenues. So this is an incredible contribution to local service providers, retailers, restaurants and the overall economy. Bloomington is a major creative hub to the 41,552 artists in Hennepin County alone. So it really is central to the sustainability and growth of the regional creative economy. Investment in the creative economy offers a strong return on investment, especially in the wake of COVID-19. So we just wanted to take a moment to thank council for your ongoing support of this work, especially during this time. I'll go on to a brief overview of some projects we worked on in 2020. One event that we worked on with staff from various departments is the Old Cedar Avenue Bridge Celebration in partnership with the Minnesota Valley Refuge Friends. So in 2020, we really focused on event planning and community outreach and engagement to better understand what the community would like to see. Of course, the event was postponed due to COVID-19, but we are hoping to reschedule it to tentatively take place this September. The painting that you see here is by Eric Cornet and it commemorates the renovation of the bridge and historic improvements. And this image will be used in promotional efforts for our future celebration.
Can I interrupt just a second? That is a stunning painting. I like that painting a lot. That's wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to mention, actually, it is on display in Civic Plaza near the community development window. So if you want to see it in person, I highly recommend it. It's even more stunning in person.
Bet. So, well done, Mr. Cornet. Very, very well done. So sorry to interrupt.
No problem, thank you. Last year installation for the South Loop Songbird was by Donald Lipsky, was postponed also due to COVID-19, but fabrication for the sculpture did take place last year. So just as a brief reminder, this was, the sculpture in the South Loop sign will be located at the intersection of Old Chalk P and Kilabrew, right next to our new trail connection. Over 250 migratory birds passed through the refuge. So this piece really honors the refuge as an important South Loop asset. It's also a nod to the theme of migration in general, considering the nearby airport visitors and the diversity of Bloomington residents. Next project is last year, based on our community feedback, we pursued the idea of a community garden at a vacant lot right next to the new fire station at Old Chalk P and 86th Street. So we're partnering with Parks and Recreation and working through logistics at this time, potentially launching gardens even this year. If we are able to launch this year, we plan to support a scout project this spring for water tank and compost bins. And also a proposal from a Bloomington resident who'd like to develop an educational space to teach kids about gardening, organics and sustainability at the garden. And the next step would be to work with an artisan landscaped designer to consider some seating, some seats, signage and native plantings on the site. They would then consult with the new gardeners and other stakeholders in the summer to develop a plan for this. Essentially, it would be a small pocket park. We're also very excited to see that investment in public art by other businesses and entities in the South Loop really increased in 2020, which demonstrates an appreciation of the value and impact of public art and working with local artists. Here you see murals located at the 28th Avenue Station parking ramp, all commissioned by Metro Transit. On the bottom left-hand corner, you see a welcome arch by Christopher E. Harrison at the new nature play area at the Old Cedar Avenue Bridge Trailhead. And that's from Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge. And utility box wrap by Bloomington artist Jesse Golfis, which was commissioned by McGough. So a few other just brief project highlights. The Old Cedar Avenue Augmented Reality Tour by Adam Davis, Maggie and Nancy Musingusi was very popular last year. Received over 16,000 views in a little over a year. And that is something you have to be onsite to access. We participated in the Bloomington Art Scavenger Hunt. We partnered with the BCVB to develop a public art itinerary, which is still on their We partnered with the BCVB to develop a public art itinerary, which is still on their website. The South Loop mural artist team, Oi She, was selected, but installation was postponed until this year. We also developed an initial equity assessment report or a report with observations and recommendations for us to continue to advance our equity efforts within Creative Placemaking. So I'll move on to 2021 projects and events. First step is that we will be launching our South Loop Public Art Audio Guide this spring. And so this guide will be hosted on AutoCast, which is a location-based app with over 250 guides across 150 cities and users across the globe. Our neighbors in Wisconsin, Iowa, and Illinois do have guides, but we will be the first to have a guide in Minnesota. The guide will really get people more engaged with their surroundings, encourage exploration, and spend more time enjoying the area. Some of the features include artwork photos, information and descriptions, also directions to the art, each piece, and audio clips from inner artist interviews. There's also an option to add badges and collect for a prize or an incentive. So when we launch, there will be 25 art projects included in our app, and they also include projects that are commissioned by other entities outside of the city. And then by the end of the summer, we hope to have 36 to 38 projects featured. Next is art boxes. Art boxes transform utility boxes into vehicles for artistic expression and have several benefits, including reducing graffiti, beautifying neighborhoods and contributing to its character, and fostering a more walkable neighborhood by essentially creating a free outdoor walkable art gallery. This program really has become one of our most inclusive artist opportunities. It welcomes individuals of varying experience levels with a, with a really relatively simple application and working in all mediums, so they could be working in drawing, painting, photography, pottery, and more. It doesn't have some of the barriers that people might find to apply as some of the other public art opportunities do, so it really helps build our local capacity of artists. This year, we received 91 applications and 41% were Bloomington residents, which we were really happy and surprised with. And it really has helped expand our local artist roster. And 30% of those applicants identified as BIPOC. This year, we'll be wrapping six utility boxes and designed by local artists selected by a stakeholder panel. So I'll just briefly go over the designs. Here we have a design by Robin Brewer and Luis Fitch. Next is John C. Gerber and Shakuntala Maheshwari. On the left is a design by Jose Revoy and Leah Yellowbird. Installation of the South Loop Songbird Sculpture by Donald Lipsky, as I mentioned before, is planned for the summer as well. We'll also be working on the installation of the South Loop mural. And again, as a reminder, it's around an Excel substation in South Loop, facing both American Boulevard and 30th Avenue, and will total 752 feet long, making this the longest mural that we know of in Minnesota. The selected artist team again is Oi She, and their proposal revolves around a tapestry, tapestry theme. The idea that Bloomington is where everyone intersects, and the city is a touchpoint where people have diverse cultures, generations, and backgrounds entangled into a broader story. They'll actually be curating eight murals, each assigned to a different artist, and will be utilizing a tiled system with pre-selected vibrant color theme, which is inspired by colors found in the surrounding parks, vegetation, and rivers. This round of Creative Spark was modified from the previous version, and that this year we're specifically, the Commission wanted to focus on temporary and permanent public art installations to enhance and activate the South Loop neighborhood. So three to five artworks from Minnesota artists specifically will be located at Bloomington Central Station Park area and/or the River Ridge Play Lot with installation also planned for the summer. Additional projects for this year include participation in the Ice Sculpture Exploration Event to promote the South Loop District, partnering with Parks and Recreation for Friday Night Live and Mini Market Event on August 6th at Bloomington Central Station Park, developing a scope of work based on our initial equity assessment report, revisiting creative projects from, for Council's previous Neighborhood Focus Area Initiative around the 86 Nicollet Area, which was postponed last year, and starting to discuss and plan creative wayfinding system and some pocket park options to add more gathering spaces in South Loop. Are there any additional comments from the team? Any questions?
Well, thank you for the presentation. Council, any questions? Comments? Responses? To the Creative Placemaking Work Plan for 2021? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, just a comment. I, I hadn't considered, you know, and it's really exciting to me what, what, um, what the, the utility box project has turned into. That's really, really interesting. I hadn't considered how that, you know, would, would sort of add to your list of, of local artists and that kind of thing. So that's just, that's really exciting. Just a quick question. I, I know obviously historically, the vast majority of the funding has come from the South Loop Development Fund. And you, you mentioned in an email, a previous request a few years ago for, or that's something that came out of strategic priorities. Are there any plans? Knowing obviously how much can change, as we all saw. Are there any plans for any funding requests outside of that South Loop Development Fund, at least at this point that you're aware of?
Ms. Palanca?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. Um, I mean, I think something that we have discussed quite a bit, and that I've heard from Council that you have an interest in expanding creative placemaking efforts throughout the greater city of Bloomington and not restricting it to South Loop. Of course, the funding is always the issue with these projects. So I think, you know, in previous times, we've discussed both with HRA and also with Public Works in terms of projects that they have coming up and weaving in creative placemaking efforts. We've also been doing some research in how we could potentially fund or at least be planning for creative effort, creative placemaking efforts throughout the city. We did put that on a back burner, just, you know, in light of the impact of COVID-19, but we definitely hope to pursue that and present some ideas to Council to consider. But I think for now, even just thinking of them as demonstration projects and working with other departments, when there is room to allot for a budget for creative placemaking, we are certainly very interested in doing that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation here. It's quite impressive what you're doing in the city and the community, and I very much appreciate it. The only comment that I want to make is, like, two weekends ago, with my family, we went actually to St. Paul on a mural tour, and they have in the St. Anthony Park area, a number of murals, and you can, it's a walking tour, although we drove, but, um, you know, that, that's our own bias. But one of the things that struck me was you had the mural tour and the places that were on there, but how many other businesses within the area put up murals, installations, sculptures, things of that nature? How a project that happened a few years ago there led to additional artwork and creative placemaking within the area? And it was really, it was really fascinating to see. I see that we're starting to get, I think, at least enough with the, with the number of different projects you're doing there. And so, uh, two points I want to make. One, I love the idea that you're on this art guide where people can get that and get out and see these things. I would encourage you to explore options to make that even easier and more accessible to people that aren't familiar with the specific tool that you saw. And to, to the previous comment, how we get this beyond the South Loop as well? Because what I was struck with, that was in a, you know, candidly, a very industrial area and an area that I don't think a lot of people would just normally go walk around in because they were just old buildings. And I think that this has some potential to really help with revitalization of some of the older parts of our neighborhood of creating some just real beauty in those and, and a reason to go into them and see things. And, um, and I could tell that the businesses were excited about it because, you know, they clearly had spent some money to put these on there and showcase and promote their business. So, um, I'll, you know, that's, that's just a bunch of random comments. So, but thank you very much for what you're doing. Very exciting work that you're doing in the city here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I'll echo my colleagues' comments that this is really, really exciting to see, and especially as somebody that lives in the South Loop and a few blocks from where a lot of these projects are going up. I know it makes my neighborhood brighter, so I sure appreciate it. And I just briefly, I will say kind of a request to you and to staff generally, as we're kind of coming out of this tough budgetary time, and we may have more flexibility. I'd be curious to look at what kind of funding would we need to set aside, say, from strategic priorities? Kind of at a couple of different levels. So to your point of working with staff in other areas, whether it's neighborhood commercial node opportunities that come up or Lindell Avenue retrofit, kind of setting aside funding for creative placemaking to serve in a consultative role, be able to kind of provide opinion. You have a relationship with artists and folks doing these projects, even just to bring folks together and say, go ahead. And then I'd also be curious if we were to have funding set aside for opportunities to, that, that come up, what would be an adequate amount of funding to be able to take some of those swing projects here and there? And how active could the Commission be in some of those opportunities that pop up at different funding levels? So just information that'd be cool to see when we come back to budgeting, Mr.?
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. I will just add that we have been involved in the Gateway District Efforts, which has been really fulfilling for us. And we did an art chat event to kind of see what artist needs would be for live workspace in that area and have found really interesting results from that. And so, yes, I will definitely take that into consideration moving forward.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Comments? Councilmember Loman.
Well, Mayor, certainly, I'll add my hat to the spreading creative placemaking across the city, but I think we already know I'm very supportive of that. So I guess if there is anything else, are we ready to move this, Mayor? I'm not sure if you've got some comments or?
It looks like we are at the end of questions and comments. If there is no, no one else, um, Councilmember Loman, if you would like to take action, maybe move the, uh, the 2021 Creative Placemaking Commission work plan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Martin to approve the Creative Placemaking Commission 2021 work plan. Any further comments by the Council? Hearing none? Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. So congratulations on the work you've done. Congratulations on all you accomplished in a tough year to do this type of thing, and I appreciate that. And I really do look forward to what you've got planned for 2021. I think it's, uh, there, there's going to be a lot of things that lead this community and this entire state out of this, uh, the darkness of this past year, and absolutely ours are going to be one of them. And looking forward to the, the work plan that you've laid out and the different possibilities that we have in front of us. And can't wait to, can't wait to see it. Can't wait to get going on it. So, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. It'll be a busy year, and we look forward to it.
Very good. Did, did Kevin ever make it on? Kevin, are you with us yet?
I am here, actually.
He is there. We didn't, we're good. We weren't sure if he were here or not. There he is.
Mr. Mayor, I, I hate to say this, but you're top the end of Michigan game, so I just had to watch the end of the basketball game. I apologize.
Understood. Not, not a problem. My bracket's in shambles, so whatever happens, happens, I guess. It's a
Aren't they all?
Yep, exactly. So very good. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your good work. Looking forward to seeing what you got planned for us in 2021. Looking forward to it. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item eight point two, which is a information item, a discussion item, about modernization options for our Bloomington Ice Garden. And, uh, I know this has been something that we've talked about. I know that we, we just finished some upgrades within the past year or so to Bloomington Ice Gardens, but I think as we did that, we all acknowledged and realized and said straight out that it was the beginning because there's a lot more work to do on that iconic structure over there on, uh, on 98th Street. A lot of work to do to keep it, the vital piece, the vital place that it is here in the city of Bloomington. And, um, so we've got different possibilities in front of us. And Susan Faust from our Park and Rec Department is here to talk us through this. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yep, tonight we will be presenting the Bloomington Ice Garden modernization options. I'm Susan Faust, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation Department. And presenting with me tonight is Victor Pishati, Vice President at HGA and the Lead Consultant on the project. Bob Carr, the Ice Garden Manager, is also on the call and will be available for, for any questions. But I just wanted to start it all, providing just a little bit of background information on the project, and then Victor will walk through the options and the actual cost estimates. So the Bloomington Ice Garden originally opened with one sheet of ice in 1970, added a second, Rink Two in 1975, and Rink Three was added in 1993. The additions over time have created many functional and operational challenges that need to be corrected. Big rents over 9,000 ice hours every year and hosts over 24 tournaments and figure skating events, making it one of the busiest facilities in the state. Biggest home to our Bloomington Jefferson High School Boys and Girls Hockey Teams, Bloomington Kennedy Boys Hockey Team, the Figure Skating Club of Bloomington, and Bloomington Amateur Hockey Association. The City of Bloomington hired HGA in September of last year to complete an overall building assessment and provide conceptual design options to modernize the facility. The assessments included architectural, mechanical, electrical, and the ice systems that includes your rink floors, the refrigeration system, and the dashboard systems. HGA partnered on this project with B32 Engineering Group, who have extensive experience working with ice arenas and the evaluating and identifying renovations and improvement solutions for existing ice systems.
Susan, can I interrupt you for just a second here?
Yeah.
We were seeing one slide. Were you, were you trying to advance slides?
Yeah, no, Mayor, not quite yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. I wasn't sure if perhaps there were slides to go along with the preamble here. My apologies. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's, it's a good question. I'll advance them here in a few minutes. But really, kind of, you know, why are we completing this project now? And, uh, you know, critically, we need to replace the refrigeration system, which is powered by the R22 refrigerant. And, and again, I know that we have been, been talking about this for, for quite a while. But starting last year, the production and importing of R22 is banned. Any refrigerant that has been, you know, recovered or reclaimed is being allowed to service existing systems. But in addition to being bad for the environment, the cost of R22 is likely to increase exponentially as supplies are depleted. In 2018, the price per pound was $15, and current pricing is about $23 per pound today. The industry is really working hard to phase out the use of R22, and we would continue to see price increases as supplies are reduced. I also wanted to mention that the ice system that serves Rinks Two and Three has reached its, the end of its expected life. It's about 28 years old right now. The modernization of BIG will also update many of the mechanical systems. The project will address ADA accessibility challenges with the, with the facility, including adding elevators to get our guests to viewing areas in all three sheets of ice, and also provide some ADA accessibility to the older locker rooms and restrooms in Rink Three. Overall, this project will provide a great opportunity to update and improve one of the most historic regional ice arenas in the state. I also wanted to just, to point out that the design options presented tonight are very conceptual. We realize that changes will need to be made. We are anticipating doing additional engagement, and, uh, and that will be completed in the design phase after a modernization option has been selected. I'll advance the slide now. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about just the overall, uh, the process and timeline. So, so I mentioned, you know, building assessment. And HGA did a site visit on September 17th, and they expected, inspected really every inch of the facility, looking at all of the equipments, including the mechanical, the HVAC, fire alarms, electrical service, lighting systems, plumbing, windows and doors. And then we completed some stakeholder engagement. HGA and city staff held an input gathering session on October 29th with some of our key users of the facility. Represented in that meeting were representatives from Baja, Jefferson, and Kennedy, some of their coaches, and the Figure Skating Club of Bloomington. And really, the intent there was to find out what, you know, what what they wanted to see changed, maybe what were some of the challenges in the facility? And then we included that feedback in the the modernization options that that you'll see tonight. I also wanted to point out, I did do a few more engagement meetings. On February 20, on February 23rd, I held a separate meeting with our high school activities directors and coaches just to review with them these options and specifically address the locker room addition. And you'll see when Victor starts to present that we'll be proposing in one of the options to move our competition rink to rink three. And we wanted to make sure that our high school teams and coaches were supportive of of this recommendation. And then on March 15th, I presented these options to to the Baja Board at their last board meeting. And you will see in your council packets, letters of support from the our primary stakeholders at the facility. The modernization options, Victor will be presenting those in the next slides. Part presentation, so last week at our Parks Arts and Recreation Commission meeting, we reviewed the options or with, excuse me, with the commission and asked for for their input. Tonight, we're providing that information to you. And then next steps, we are hoping to bring this item back to a future city council meeting, either the end of May or the beginning of June, kind of for your direction on which option we should move forward. And then currently, construction would be planned for for 2023. All right. And then I will turn it over to Victor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. First of all, am I coming through okay?
Yes, you are. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's good to be with you. So this first slide summarizes four options that we are bringing forward to council this evening. Option one, that's labeled ice system replacement, is just that, however, it also includes all of the infrastructure repair and betterment work that our architectural engineering team identified at the building. Essentially, that means repairing what's broken or repairing what's outdated, not necessarily operational improvements, but repairing and replacing systems that are not operational as well as the ice system scope of work. Option one, you will begin to see a renovation and expansion along the west. The area that we've been calling the West Concourse, the area that links the three rinks together for the public, as well as some locker room enhancements. Option 3A will then build upon the other two and show the inclusion of two sheets of curling. And then option 3B, as Susan mentioned, will be a relocation of the primary competition arena from rink one to rink three, and some of the associated changes to make that happen. So option one doesn't have a lot of changes that appear in drawings, but it is a robust scope of work. It will include the replacement of the refrigeration plant for all three rinks because contemporary refrigeration equipment requires more space. That will trigger an expansion for a new refrigeration room, as well as the relocation of some equipment and and isolated repairs that have been needed to rink resurface rooms, ice melt pits, and so forth. Also, this option includes, along with the refrigeration piping, the replacement of the concrete rink surfaces themselves for the three rinks and a replacement of dashboard systems. In option two, and we'll be showing an enlarged view in a bit that's a little bit more legible. But on option two, I did want to share that this builds upon all of the system replacements in option one. And in between rinks two and three, they're numbered one, two, and three, beginning from the right side, which is the south or the 98th Street side. Between rinks two and three, there is that narrow slice of space that contains existing locker rooms. In option two, those would be renovated, refurbished. Their plumbing, their physical infrastructure, as well as mechanical and ventilation systems serving those rooms. The west addition, which you will, which you see encircled in the orange color at the bottom, is a significant renovation and expansion of that entire west concourse. And we'll see that in more detail on the next slide. Not quite the next slide. This is a stitched together version of the scans of all of the paper drawings back when these facilities were done. Again, to the right hand side of the slide would be the south side of the ice garden favoring 98th Street. So you see rink one with the bleachers constructed in 69, rink two at about 1975, and rink three in 1992. This composite shows the orange line outlining what is the current outline of the building on the west side. In large letters in the white area towards the bottom of the slide, you see annotated as existing entry. That represents the most recent project in 2019 to create what is a more welcoming, glassy, open, accessible entrance. That particular scope of work is preserved and integrated into each one of the options that you will see. So there's no proposal to remove or alter work that was done fairly recently. So the orange outline represents the existing boundary, and then you can see the composite of an expansion of spaces further to the west. So this now illustrates a proposed expansion of the west concourse. Reinforcing something that Susan said, this is by no means a complete design at this point, far from it. But in a study like this, it does take the scope far enough to understand what the scope of work might be, how to meet the needs of the facility, and in turn, assign appropriate cost estimates for the work that would receive a lot more detailed design later. What you see is the improvement and expansion of toilet rooms, a widened concourse to ease some of the significant congestion concerns that occur there now. Slightly expanded office space, but it does make it more operational. A new and visible reception desk pairing with the main entrance. One current room that's used as multipurpose is relocated to the north side of the arena, and a second multipurpose room is added. Those are spaces that receive a lot of use and just are there is not enough square footage to serve all those functions. And then you'll see different ways in these options to accommodate dry land training, and there are also new facilities for figure skating teams and clubs. So option 3A continues to build on options one, which is included. Option two, which is the renovation of the rink two and three locker rooms, as well as the west addition. And in this case, two curling sheets can be accommodated at the north end of rink three. I neglected to mention that part of the option one ice systems renovation is to narrow rink three from its current Olympic ice sheet size, which is 200 feet by 100 feet, to an NHL rink size, which is 15 feet narrower at 85 feet. That allows an additional 15 feet, the full length of rink three, to accommodate other programming uses, be it curling or dry land training or new seating, as you'll see in the next option. Option 3B then implements this concept program move to shift primary competition to rink three. The team believes there are a number of advantages to doing this. First of all, the newly constructed entrance in 2019 favors rink two and three and already presents itself as the most welcoming and intuitive place to enter the building. In that portion of the building, it could present the widest concourse area to accommodate the the traffic flow of larger crowds. It presents an opportunity for completely reconstructed toilet rooms. And then this particular option, you see the addition of six contemporary team rooms that would serve varsity and junior varsity teams constructed to the north and to the east of rink three. It's also closest to the parking infrastructure to the north of the building. So it could be a real operational improvement to shift competition to rink three. This slide is an enlargement of the locker room expansion. If you recall, the rink three has now shifted in width to an NHL sized arena, which does then allow more width to be able to remodel the space into these new locker rooms. In this particular case, these locker rooms would take the place of curling. That would not be in the program. Currently, this area does accommodate dry land training. That would be accommodated as part of a western expansion adjacent to rink one. So dry land training would continue to be accommodated. It would relocate to outside of rink one. So to offer a summary of the cost estimates for these different options. And I will call your attention to an element that was cropped off of these slides. However, it is shown correctly in your packets. The center line with all the totals represents the construction costs for the project. For example, at the top of option one, you see the 10.8 million. What is not labeled is the line in between the 10.8 and the 12.5. That line represents soft costs. Those are all non-construction costs related to a complete project cost. Those costs include elements such as any equipment, technology, furniture, building permits, testing, sack and whack charges, all the costs that don't go to the building contractor. So there is approximately a 28% multiplier from building construction cost to project cost. So I just wanted to provide that clarification. So in option one, turnkey project cost, you see there is estimated as 12,520,000. Option two, that then adds the western concourse renovation in addition, as well as an allowance for renovation of rinks two, three locker rooms, comes in at 19.7 million. Option 3A, which now adds the curling amenity to the north side of of rink three, that increases the total cost to 21.1.162 million. And then option 3B, which adds a significant locker room expansion to the north, as well as fitting that out with bleacher capacity to serve competition. That option is 24.78 million. We were asked to consider or evaluate the cost of installing solar photovoltaic panels on the roofs. A very rough order of magnitude numbers. That would be approximately $2 million. That has a number of caveats to it. There would need to be an analysis to verify that the existing building structure does have the excess capacity to support solar photovoltaics. Additionally, the method of procurement of those panels, whether they are simply purchased and installed by the city or whether there is some sort of financing and operational agreement with the utility can affect the total cost of that. But for the purposes of this presentation, $2 million offers a rough order of magnitude number should the city be interested in fitting out the roof of arenas one, two, and three with solar PV panels. We have two renderings, two pictorial renditions of what this might look like. This is a three dimensional plan cut, just offering an overview, a drone view, if you will, of the expanded western concourse, as well as the location of the new locker rooms to the north. And the last image, again, not proposing a design, but illustrating that a western expansion could in fact rebrand, if you will, or revitalize the identity all the way along the western edge of the building. It is inspired by some of the materials and colors already present in the 2019 addition to be harmonious with that, but then taking that new aesthetic and stretching it along the entire west face of the arena. So this is our preliminary snowfall view of what that might look like.
Thank you, Victor. I just wanted to review some potential options for consideration to finance the project. Staff have talked about state bonding, using charter bonds, a referendum, and local option sales tax. Staff will continue to explore some additional funding options and provide or make a suggestion to city council as the project moves forward. And tonight, as we said, we're not asking the council to to make any decisions on the project. But we we are hoping to maybe hear from from the council on, you know, is there anything that is not reflected in these options that you'd like to see? What what additional information would you need to be able to make a recommendation on a preferred option? And then is there an expectation for fundraising on the project? And and with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the presentation and the information. And counsel, as we get into questions here, I I know that they they extended the invitation to give tours to the to council members out there. And I hope you took them up on it because it's it's good to be able to. I know you've all been there. But it's also good to get out there and to to visualize the different options. The the expansion of the rink three and the possibility of curling rinks and to take a look at the to take a look at the cooling equipment, or worse, to take a listen to the cooling equipment. If it is loud and you can tell that it is well past its useful life, just for how hard it's working, just to keep the to keep the the ice solid and in good shape. So I mean, I I just want to say I was happy. Thank you much for the the tour that you gave me and thanks for for walking me through it and to explain those things up close and personal. And and I think it's nice to do that and to envision what 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 a an addition that building is and has been to, as I keep talking about, centers of community. And that's been a center of community for a half century here in the city of Bloomington. And I'm excited to think about the possibilities that we could have in terms of expanding that and improving upon that as a center of community. Because it's 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 a landmark. It's a place if you if you mention Bloomington Ice Garden, everybody knows where it is. They know where you're going and they know what you're talking about. And it doesn't matter where in the Twin Cities they are. It's that it's that well known. And it's a center of regional community, and it's a center of of this this community as well, just in terms of the the hours that people spend there. And I know people who spend countless hours in those rinks and in those locker rooms. And as I said, it's exciting to to see possibilities and to think what it could be and what it could look like. And how it could be such a strong part of this community, once again, even stronger than it is right now, but a a strong asset that that so many people who visit it from across Minnesota, across the upper Midwest, come in and just see what an outstanding quality building it could be. So just my my thoughts and my comments as we get going here. I see Councilmember Beloga and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Susan, good informative presentation. So without respect to going to any of the options one, two, or three, what else is needed for the building? I did a look at the CIP and I see that in 2022, next year, we have about $3 million program for roofs. And I didn't see that as part of the presentation on either of the options, any of the options, I should say. So I'm I'm just trying to get a handle on how much really do we need to put into big in the next couple of years to make that a viable facility?
I was gonna say, thank you, Councilmember Beloga. The and Victor, feel free to to jump in. But we did include costs to replace the roofs in the estimates that were presented this evening. So the the roof replacement was in future years of CIP. And we requested that that be added into the estimates for for this particular project. Because we feel like if we can move forward with one of these options, the facility with the improvements that we will make and the mechanical equipments being replaced, we will be able to be viable for the next 35 plus years at the Ice Garden.
Okay, good, because I I just didn't identify roofs and there's a lot of numbers in there and some of those charts are sort of mind boggling to try to ferret out what's in or not. So that was probably the biggest. But so everything in the CIP from 2020 to 2030 is really addressed, is what I hear you saying, in the proposal.
Yes, Councilmember Beloga, I just added another slide that does list what's currently in the the Ice Garden CIP for 2022. And yes, all of these items will be addressed in one of these modernization options. I mean, depending upon which one is 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 chosen.
Gotcha. Perfect. Okay. And I I think we've chewed on a little bit about fundraising. And I I think that from my perspective, that we do want to have fundraising as part of this from the particular user groups. I know that in previous sessions, memory serves that we did talk about that and sort of got a lot of pushback from them. But we're talking about some real money here. And we're also talking about this is more than just a Bloomington amenity. It's it really is a metropolitan wide, if not statewide, facility. And I understand the need for the improvements, but I find it difficult to support the improvements in their entirety without participation from user groups and from the state because of the character of the use. So I will turn the floor over to others. Thank you.
And I will say, Councilmember Beloga, and I agree with you. And and I it is something that we have talked about, and I think we talked about it. I believe you, I don't know if you were at the meeting when we actually did bring up different possibilities and whether it was part of a state bonding request, whether it was working with the user groups or other options. So yes, that that has been duly noted, and you have brought it up before, and we have had this discussion before. And I do think moving forward that that is certainly part of the consideration. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, we will bring this conversation back probably in May. The process for submitting projects for state consideration for bonding begins actually in June, when the projects have to be submitted to Minnesota Management and Budget. MMB processes the requests for bonding. And that kicks off the administration's review of it so that they can make their recommendations going into the next legislative session. And 2022 is the bonding year. So we will come back to the council in May to get direction on what you would like to include in the city's official request for state bonding for this or any other projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you. Yes, I'm I was participant in all of those sessions. I do understand the bonding. I also understand that first time bonding requests generally do not pass in into the bonding bill. Or more often than not, I should say, do not get approved. So it's it's gonna be a heavy lift is the point that I want to make to the public to get state bonding in this person's opinion at least. Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess to to begin with, every year can be a bonding bonding year if you try hard enough, it seems. But I just a couple of quick questions here. These total project costs in this in this estimate, are are those, is that $2021 or $2023 or what is that?
Yes, great question, Councilmember. They have been escalated at this juncture to the $2023. That is part of the percentage that is included in the multiplier from the construction cost to the project cost. So should that date hold, then these numbers are escalated out to that time period?
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. And then I guess, and I recognize this may not be a question that can be easily answered, but I mean, you know, it seems to me at the very least, I mean, we're looking at option one as something we kind of have to do anyway. Am I am I correct in understanding that, that, you know, R22 is getting phased out? And and once that's phased out, we're kind of out of luck as far as our current cooling system. Am I correct in that assessment?
That's correct. No, go ahead, Susan. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, Victor. Yes, Councilmember that is correct. When the supply of R22 runs out, and if we were to have a leak, we would not be able to 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 run our our refrigeration systems currently.
Sure. At at the risk of mixing metaphors, when the R22 runs out, that's the ballgame. So, you know, I I guess my question really is, you know, given that and and some of the other things that have been talked about it, I mean, particularly for option one, you know, at at what point does it become more expensive not to do this? I mean, how, you know, how long do we realistically think we can sort of run out the clock on this?
Victor, would you like to answer that question?
I'll try. It's a it's a difficult question. I think I can amplify what Susan is saying. It's it's not coincidental that 2020 is actually the calendar year where R22 is no longer legal. And so existing facilities, everything from at the residential scale to automotive to commercial scale that are currently operating with, you know, what we used to know as Freon, now need to phase out and adopt new refrigerant. And so if nothing is done, it loops back to your initial point that should anything occur with the systems, there will not be a safety net or a backup plan because there that refrigerant can no longer be utilized.
Sure. Okay. Well, you know, I I guess, you know, my my initial thought, you know, and I I have made my thoughts clear on this as well that you know, this this I I, you know, this is a statewide asset. It is, of course, a major asset for our community, but we know it's a statewide asset as well. And and, you know, I think moving forward, we we need to be, you know, as 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 Councilmember Beloga said, realistic and and honest with the public. But I oh, Denise says I'm super loud all of a sudden. I didn't do anything. You know, I I I think I would I would likewise have a difficult time supporting, you know, particularly, I would say, anything beyond option one without some some assistance from from the state. And I agree, it would also be appropriate to to turn to fundraising from from some of the athletic groups as well. I, you know, I I think of this as as an investment, not only in the future of our community, but really in the in the future of our state. I mean, this, you know, we we know the history, of course, of of big and, you know, my sisters were all figure skaters. I remember when when ring three was built and you know, this is this is a big deal, but as as Councilmember Beloga said, this is this is real money we're talking about here. So I think we we need to be clear about where our responsibilities are. But I think we also need to be clear about what the cost of inaction is. And and, you know, it sounds like from what we're hearing tonight that we don't really have a whole lot of time. So I don't know if any of that is particularly useful or helpful, but those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Coulter, if I may just add a term to my last answer, I've been here thinking asset preservation is probably the best descriptor for option one, to use state of Minnesota terminology. That is the work that is necessary to keep the building up and running for the various systems. So I think it's fair to call option one the asset preservation option. Thank you.
And I would say we should phrase it just that way when we apply to the state for bonding dollars.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I just want to thank Susan and your team for all of the work that you've done to pull this.
Councilmember Carter, I think we've lost your audio. And I believe you're frozen up as well. Why don't we move on to Councilmember Martin? We'll double back to Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, and forgive me, I may have missed it in the packet. Do we have kind of a ballpark idea of the revenue generating capacity if we were to add these? If we were to add these curling sheets in, just the space rental, things like that?
So Councilmember Martin, we have not completed a performa for adding the two lanes of curling. And if that would be something that we could do in the next step, if that was an option that or the the direction that council wanted us to pursue.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it would definitely give us a better idea of of revenue. You know, right now, we'd be looking at those lanes as more of recreational recreational leagues, at least starting out, teaching, you know, learn how to curl with some of our youths and some of our seniors.
Gotcha. Yeah, and in the larger scope of things, obviously, that's that's a fraction. But and then also for facilities that have these larger kind of open spaces, I know like the dry land areas that were included in some of the options there. If anybody rents those out for multipurpose uses at any point, too, I'd just be kind of curious. Thank you.
In in Councilmember Martin, I would just like to add too, you know, with the with the option for the curling lanes, you know, you look at facilities like the Chaska, you know, where they have a full restaurant and bar. You know, that would be something that I I think our curlers would would want in the future. And that that's where we're a little bit limited, but certainly something to to consider.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. First, on the necessary ones in option one, there was a lot of conversation about the R22. But a lot of those costs are related to breaking up and replacing concrete, replacing dashboard, things of that nature. And I just wanted to verify that those that that work is required in order to address the R22 issue and that being phased out, or is that being done for a different reason?
Councilmember Nelson, it's a good question. I will need to defer to the ICE refrigeration engineer to make sure I'm providing an accurate answer. So if I could take that question and and reply through Susan, we will do that, but I want to defer to the ICE refrigeration engineer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I understand how sometimes things are within concrete or below and and need to. Sometimes you need to take it out to replace it. So I get that 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 makes sense. My other question, going along the lines of what Councilmember Martin was just asking with regards to curling. And I'll I'll be honest, I'm a fan of curling. I was on my company curling team. We competed very successfully for last place. And it's a fun sport and I I would love to see it here. I did. I'm just concerned about the economics of two lanes of curling. You know, when I've done it, there's been significantly more than that. I think you raised an extremely good point about some of the other amenities. We'll say food and not the other portion of that that people would want while they're doing their curling. But I think it brings the bigger question and and something we've talked about with the fundraising and other things is I would like to see the overall business plan. One of the things that we've talked about a number of times with regards to this facility is that our rates are sometimes lower than other similar facilities because the condition is older and so forth. Well, if we upgrade the condition, do we get better rates? You know, what I'd love to see is the business plan. And ideally, I'd love to see the business plan that allows us to at least operationally, maybe not on a cap capital basis, but at least operationally break even or better. And you know, if that's something that could be brought forth with this proposal, I would very much appreciate that. It would very much help support each of these levels of investment, hopefully.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Carter, doubling back to you. You you froze up on us.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Well, I I guess I don't know how much of what I said you heard, but I will just start from the beginning with my comments. And I just want to thank Susan and her team for all the work that they've done to pull this together. And I did go on a tour of big and was able to see kind of the the wide ranging needs of the facility. And so really appreciated that opportunity. I also wanted to say I I really appreciate all the community engagement you've done, particularly among the stakeholders that use big. So my my thoughts were very much along the lines of what Councilmember Nelson was just talking about and maybe Martin did too. But I I wasn't able to hear that. And just really thinking about the business case, the economics of this project. And even when we need to go to make those decisions around how many locker rooms or is it curling? You know, what are those different amenities within big that can help us with that cost recovery as we look at the broader project and longer term financial aspects of it? So so I agree that that is a need for me to be able to understand and to be able to make a decision. And then the second thing with that I wanted to, oh, so one of the a really specific question that I had was around the locker rooms and how many locker rooms do we really need? And so I think that you, your team did a really, really great job laying out the needs related to, you know, the mechanical, the electrical, the refrigeration equipment, like all the needs there in terms of replacement. But then in kind of that cost recovery and business plan case making, I'd like to just better understand, you know, really, where are the needs to related to those amenities? Whether that's, you know, what you're hearing from some of the user groups or what we're learning through our Parks Master planning process and that assessment. And that is it. Thank you.
So so.
Ms. Hollis, did you have?
I was just gonna add, Councilmember Carter, so what's included for the locker room and the number of locker rooms is in current plan is to accommodate the junior varsity and varsity high school teams for Kennedy boys and Bloomington Jefferson boys, and then the girls program. There are some locker rooms that we're proposing to renovate outside of rank three that would be available for really all users of the facility. And as Victor pointed out, those would be more of a remodel that haven't been updated or renovated in probably the 50 years that the Ice Garden has been open. And I too just wanted to add, as far as the business plan and really looking at what potential. potential revenue options, uh, we could be bringing in with some of these options. Um, I just want to, uh, to, to, to point out that we have been, um, over the last two years, working towards increasing our fees at the Ice Garden, uh, to address some of the financial, um, um, I think financial situation at the Ice Garden. So we are slowly getting it up. We are currently charging a, a market rate at the Ice Garden, but certainly think that with some major investments, facility investments and renovations, that we would be able to, um, increase those ice rental rates even further.
Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think my colleagues have said it so many times, uh, great presentation. Uh, just a couple of questions here. Um, so with the capital expenses, it, it wasn't clear to me, are those concentrated in option one, or are they spread across options one through, uh, you know, three or four, three B you got here?
Councilmember Lowman, let me, I just want to make sure I understand the question. Um, are you asking if the options that occur after option one absorb and include costs of options before those?
No. So you, you talked about that, that there are capital expenditures that are out there. So for example, Councilmember Blogo raised the roof. Um, uh, had brought up the roof, uh, as an example, and there are other capital expenditures that are out there and out years. And it was my understanding that those capital expenditures were included in this project. And I certainly saw them, but it wasn't clear to me if those capital expenditures were, uh, completely consolidated within the option one, or if they were spread across option two, option three A and three option B. Help me.
Yes. Thank you so much for clarifying the question. The answer is all of those what I termed asset preservation, um, or repairs, betterments needed that have been in the CIP are covered in option one.
Thanks for that clarity. I just, it wasn't, it just wasn't clear to me the way that was, the way that was written, where those all fell. Um, so then just, uh, just a practical question. Uh, in terms of seating, um, you know, we've got the, uh, the rank number one, uh, where the city currently is now. It's my understanding when we do the upgrade to this, will we increase the amount of seating? I just, it wasn't clear to me. And if we move it to three, is it, will we have more seating in three? Uh, help me understand what that seating might look like. And, you know, uh, with making that, would it be more accessible? Or are we not to that standpoint yet?
Um, we are conceptually, thank you for the question. Um, the option three B that proposes to relocate the primary competition venue and programs to Rink Three would construct seating capacity that matches Rink One currently. Now that can all vary, but that's what the working assumption is at this juncture. Um, we, in speaking with the leadership staff at big, um, it's, uh, we try and, uh, program for Easter Sunday, if you will, um, for that build, so much building for that one occasional rivalry crowd. Um, but in general, our understanding is that the capacity in Rink One serves the general need of competition within the facility. So the current cost estimate assumes duplicating the seating capacity in Rink One onto Rink Three. Yes, the accessibility would also be improved. The cost estimate includes a dedicated lift to allow wheelchair accessibility to both lower and upper tier seats in option three B. Now that being said, option two, three A and three B include the addition of an elevator to provide accessibility to, um, a viewing gallery that currently exists between rinks one and two. So accessibility is improved, um, in all options as well.
And if I could just ask, uh, kind of a personal question in terms of, uh, uh, with the acoustics, I used to play, uh, in band, uh, will there be any improvements to that from, uh, rank one to three, if you make those upgrades?
I will double back and check. I do not believe that the cost estimate includes any acoustical remediation at this time.
Yeah, just curious about that. Cause that, you know, just makes the game a little more exciting with, uh, when you're competing against, uh, different folks.
And Councilmember Lowman, I would just like to, uh, to add to what Victor, uh, talked about with capacity of seating. You know, I think one of the benefits, if we do, um, you know, add the seating in ring three, and that becomes our competition ring, is then we would have both rinks one that has that seating capacity and rinks three. So if we were to hold, and this doesn't happen often, but if we were to hold multiple events at one time, we could accommodate that, um, with rinks one and three, which is a, which is a real benefit.
It's good. There won't be any parking problems when you do that.
Never, there's never any parking problems.
Never. Not one time.
Councilmember Nelson, another question?
Yeah, uh, just very quickly, Mayor, um, with regards to, uh, the economics of things, there was a mention of solar panels. And, um, when we looked at that, I'd, I'd obviously like to know the payback period and some things like that, uh, with that potential option.
All right. Susan, if you could tell us one more time, the, the timeline as it, this will work its way through and churn a little bit more and then come back to the council when?
Um, I believe we would like to bring it back to the council, um, at the second meeting in May.
Second meeting in May. Very good. All right. Counsel, any final questions here?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Fabruki.
Thank you. Uh, Susan mentioned earlier that we have Bob Carr on the meeting as well. Uh, Bob is the arena manager and, uh, this might be the last time that we have Bob at a council meeting. He's retiring at the end of April after 40 years working for the city, if not more than that. Um, so I want to make sure that, uh, we have this public opportunity to thank Bob for his service to the community. As I, I go around the twin cities and I run into people in the hockey world and, uh, tell them where I work, uh, Bob Carr's name comes up an awful lot, that, uh, he's really, uh, widely known and, uh, people are very fond of Bob. Uh, he's been around for a long time and, uh, we appreciate all that he's done for the city of Bloomington. I know that he, uh, he bleeds the R22 that comes out of the machinery there at big, uh, and, and we're really grateful for his efforts over four decades.
Absolutely. Bob, can you turn your camera on? Are you with us there?
All right, I'm, there we go.
There he is.
That was very thoughtful of you to bring that up.
Well, thank you so very much, Bob. I, you know, if, if this is indeed our last chance to, to talk to you, uh, we want to thank you. Uh, 40 years is a long time to do anything. And, uh, to, to be putting in the outstanding work that you put into the city of Bloomington greatly appreciated. And I know that, as Jamie said, your heart and soul has been in, uh, that, that, uh, Ice Garden for a number of years. And if, if those walls could talk, I'm sure they'd tell as many stories as you could about what you've seen and the people you've met and all that's gone on there. But thank you so very much. Thank you for your work and, and thanks for all you've done.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Very good. Victor, Susan, thank you much for the presentation. Thanks for the information. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on to item eight point three, which is another informational update. We're no action required on this as well. This is a, uh, an update on the plan framework and the capital improvement planning for our park system master plan, which has been in the process for some time now and is, uh, again, working its way through everything. And, uh, I know that, uh, I believe that Renee Clark from Parks is going to lead us through this. And I think Diane Kirby is going to tell us a little something about how this is all going to work in terms of some, uh, real time feedback that we would like to get. So whichever one of you wants to take it away, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Renee Clark, Assistant Director of Parks and Park Projects. Uh, me tonight is Brad Aldrich, our Lead Consultant from Confluence, who will help me present two park system master plan topics, um, key findings from a benchmark survey of similar communities and a proposed equity framework, which will allow for data-driven decisions on capital investments as they relate to racial equity. Also, as part of the presentation tonight, we will have, um, our Communications Director, Diane Kirby, um, who will introduce a live community engagement tool for the public watching tonight. Um, so with that, I will share my screen and turn it over to Ms. Kirby.
All right. Thank you, Renee, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am very excited to introduce you to a new community engagement tool that we are going to be piloting tonight. Um, it's part of our continuing efforts to advance community engagement and transparency, which is the council's strategic priority. So we are trying out tonight a new instant polling tool called Polco Live. And this online tool allows our residents to provide instant feedback on a particular topic. And tonight that will be on the Park System Master Plan. So what I'm going to do is, uh, walk you through how this is going to work and introduce you to the poll and get everybody ready to go so that they can go ahead and start voting. So what we'll have you do is you will enter BLM dot M N forward slash slash park poll in your device on your computer. And that will bring you into the poll online. And when you enter this, you'll see an introductory page. There will be a button that says join. Go ahead and click that button. And then that will take you to the page with our first question. And, uh, if I can, I will go ahead and share my screen. So Renee, if you want to go ahead and stop sharing, and I will go ahead. And once I get permission to share my page, I will do that. So Chris, if I can get permission to share my screen, I will go ahead and show you what it's going to look like from your end. So let me go ahead and I will pull up that page right now. So you should be seeing the first question. So this is the first question in our poll tonight. This particular question, it's a multiple choice question, and it's focused on natural resource management and enhancement. So which one of these three items is most important to you and/or your family? What I'm going to do is just to show you how this is going to work, I'm going to go ahead and select this first option. So I'll click on that and I'll hit submit. And then that will show you how the polling is going so far. We already have some, some people, uh, filling the survey out. And then if you hit next, that will take you to the next question. And the second question will ask you to allocate 10 points across four potential areas of investment in Bloomington Parks and Recreation. So the higher the points, the more important that that particular option is to you. The lower the points, the less important it is to you. Your points have to add up to a total of 10 points across the four items. So you can allocate your 10 points across all four items, or you can choose to just allocate it across one or two or three of the items. One other thing I want to point out to you is these particular dots here are even numbers. So if you click on that, you'll get an even number. If you click in between the dots, that will take you to an odd number. So you will have approximately 10 minutes to fill out our poll. And at that time, I'll be back to show you the final results. So the survey is now ready and open, as you can see, to go ahead and fill it out. And Renee, back to you. And if you could, please show the slide with the web address for our poll tonight, one more time, so that if anybody missed it before, they can go ahead and see it.
All right, Chris. Thank you for handing that over. Thank you for that. Um, Diane, and, um, for the, um, people watching the meeting tonight, here is that web address again for that survey. We'll come back to that in about 10 minutes. Um, I'll turn the presentation right now over to Brad Aldrich, um, to talk about the, um, Benchmark Survey Report.
Yeah, thank you, Renee, and thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor. It's great to be back. Um, tonight, as Renee mentioned, we're going to talk about the benchmark analysis and a little bit the equity analysis. But the benchmark analysis, I believe you have the, the full report in your packet. Um, we just wanted to cover, um, really quickly just kind of some major things that we noticed in the benchmark analysis when we were doing it. But first, I want to kind of define what the benchmark analysis is. Um, it's really just a comparison study of similar park and recreation agencies. And it's really just, um, a way for Bloomington to kind of evaluate, um, how we're positioned compared to some of these other cities. The survey questions were provided and created by, um, our team and city staff and provided to, uh, those corresponding agency staff to fill out and, and provide information back to us. Um, how did we pick these cities? We tried to select cities that, uh, of course had a similar size and similar characteristics, like demographics, similar populations and the similar park system as far as some of these major facilities and some of the larger park sizes. And, you know, our best guess at them being similar to Bloomington from a staffing and budget, um, perspective, without really diving into the details. Um, one of the other things that we also wanted to do is really look at definitely a few of these park agencies that we knew were really higher level of quality. So kind of an aspirational comparison. They're CAPRA Gold Medal certified, which CAPRA is, is a, the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. And it's really just, um, a way and a process of selecting some of the best and kind of most innovative and, and fiscally responsible agencies around the country. And there are a couple of those, um, included in our cities, our benchmark cities. And how we're going to use these results, again, it's just really a comparison and it just demonstrates, um, each city's, um, philosophy and approach to management. So I think that's something for Bloomington to learn from and look at, um, characteristics that they think, um, look good and what we can do to potentially, um, mimic that. Um, one of the key things in the benchmark analysis that we looked at, and here are the cities, actually, the city of Brooklyn Park, which is in Minnesota, of course, Lee's Summit Parks and Recreation in Missouri. That's a, a very similar suburb in Kansas City to Bloomington. Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation and is a suburb in Indianapolis. And both Lee's Summit and Carmel Clay are either currently CAPRA Gold Medal certified or have been in the past. So there's, they're pretty nice park, um, facilities. We also in Minnesota looked at the city of Plymouth and the city of Rochester. And I think one of the notable things here is to look at the number, um, our circle's kind of covering it up, but the number of parks in Bloomington, 97, is really, um, the second highest total number in this list. And looking at the population, we're what the second or third lowest population. So I think there's a really strong foundation, especially when you're comparing it to these CAPRA Gold Medal certified cities. Next slide, please, Renee. So again, we, we just wanted to highlight some of the, the key things that we noticed. A lot of those being sort of this facilities comparison, what other communities have and, and compared to what Bloomington may or may not have. And we've talked about some of these things in the past, but I just wanted to highlight that, um, when we're comparing these other cities, it really kind of emphasizes some of these things that we've noticed in our, our level of service comparison in the past. We also wanted to note some improvement opportunities. Um, some of these, we, we talked about some of these park agencies being aspirational and being really high quality and what we can learn from them. So we're going to look at, um, a couple of things that could help, um, Bloomington improve. Next slide. So number one is facilities. And these, these tables are a little hard to read, but, um, the top table is really looking at, um, all the cities and looking at trail mileage. And the circles are on Bloomington, um, in that middle column on the left, and that's unpaved trails. So Bloomington has 43.9 unpaved, paved trail mileage. And that's well significantly higher than any of the other cities and communities. And I think that's something that we've been hearing a lot from the community, that the community wants. And, um, as we've explored it more, we, we realized that this is actually a really great asset for the city of Bloomington and something that we should, um, kind of play up and, and figure out how to leverage and, and maybe even improve because there is potential for, for even more, um, unpaved trails that have a, a pretty significant quality. And then I think their, um, Bloomington is, is just in the paved trails category is actually doing pretty well compared to these other cities as well. That lower table is really looking at, um, outdoor fields and courts. And the circle around the left is looking at baseball and softball fields. And the take home here is that Bloomington has a lot of baseball and softball fields compared to the level of service that we did a few months ago and compared to all of these, um, these agencies that we looked at as well. The circle on the right is looking at tennis courts and it's kind of the same story. We, we've looked at these tennis courts. Bloomington has a lot of them. We've looked at these tennis courts, Bloomington has a lot of them compared to the national standard and has a lot of them compared to these other cities as well. Next slide. Another thing that keeps popping up but is verified by looking at this comparison with other cities is that indoor recreation and community center space. Bloomington is the only city in this comparison that does not have that. In fact, Lee's Summit has four community centers and City Brooklyn Park is kind of listing two. But every other community has a community center slash indoor recreation space. That lower table is showing Natural Resource Management Plan. These communities all have, have areas of natural resources and are known in part for having strong natural resources. And they all have natural resource management plans. That is something Bloomington does not have. But I know, but staff is, is working on that and mobilizing it and is poised to complete a natural resource management plan in 2021. Another element that we picked up on is the non-tax revenue. So these are all ways of raising revenue, you know, using fees and sponsorship opportunities. Bloomington is last on the list, I guess you could say. And Bloomington and Brooklyn Park are pretty similar. But when you look at the other communities, they are significantly higher, an order of magnitude higher than what we're looking at. The table on the bottom is a way to potentially address this non-tax revenue deficit. And that's appropriate fees for recreation services and programs. In this table, we asked the other communities if they charge athletic associations for field use. And every community except for Bloomington does charge for that. So that could potentially be something to explore that historically hasn't been done in Bloomington, but might be a way to address that non-tax revenue issue moving forward. Next slide. Capital Improvement Funding. Once again, Bloomington is near the bottom with Brooklyn Park. Very similar numbers, and the other communities are much higher than both Brooklyn Park and Bloomington. And I do know anecdotally that this is a five-year average that ended in 2019. And I know Brooklyn Park has undergone some pretty extensive park renovations last year and I believe this year as well. So that might leave Bloomington a little bit further behind than what this chart is showing. And the last table is marketing budget, which is kind of, might seem like a strange one, but it is something that we noticed. We're close to the city of Rochester and Brooklyn Park again, but, you know, significantly less than some of those other communities. And I think this is important to think about moving forward, because it's really how, you know, the city communicates to residents and lets residents know what's available, what's coming up. It's really advertising and it's competing against other service providers in the city. And it's even potentially advertising for groups outside of the city that could potentially use Bloomington Parks for activities like tournaments or trips or just other scheduled types of, of activities. And I know that's something that a couple of you council members have talked about in the past. Next slide. So these opportunities, we really wanted to get a really good dive into this operating budget analysis. And sometimes this is difficult, because when you're dealing with different cities, using different terminology, sometimes we're not always comparing apples to apples. And in this case, that was really highlighted because of how the park departments budgets are currently structured. And especially the maintenance expenses were difficult to parse out and compare to other communities because of how it's charged back and currently set up within the budget structure. We did note that some of the recreation and capital improvement spending are low, which we kind of just talked about. The non-tax revenue again is low and cost recovery is low. And the cost recovery that table on the right is showing, it was hard to get into detail and pick, pick certain elements of this cost recovery out. But in total, looking at the cost recovery, you know, per capita, Bloomington is, is low at 13.3% compared to these other communities. And Bloomington and Brooklyn Park again are pretty similar, but the other communities are much higher. Next slide. So kind of the big picture lessons and recommendations that we got out of this benchmark analysis are primarily, number one is to separate the Parks Department from Park Maintenance Budget, so we can fully track and understand all of the expenses and set the budget in line with the department's mission. And really just to give the Parks Department more control over, over their budget. That will help us kind of to compare to these other agencies down the road and just understand the budget a little bit more. I think there's a lot of opportunity to look at increasing user fees and non-tax revenue, which is something that we have talked about in the past, and get them up to competitive levels. But still being mindful of the city's mission and still being mindful of those that might need assistance. And then updating facilities to match current demographics, demographics and recreation trends. That's something that we've, of course, been talking a lot about. And one of the big ones here, I think, is that indoor recreation space that is, is included in most cities of Bloomington size and in all the agencies that we benchmarked against. The Natural Resource Management Plan is really vital and important, and that's being embarked upon now. And then just to align the capital improvement funding with the Parks Department's mission. And then lastly, I think that marketing budget could be a really effective way to, to really raise the profile of the park system and reach out into the community and get people engaged that haven't been engaged in the past. So that's kind of a quick tour through the benchmark analysis.
Thanks so much, Brad. Before we move on to the second part of the Park System Master Plan presentation, I will turn it back over to Ms. Kirby to view the polling results.
All right, and I will go ahead and share my screen so that we can see the detailed results of what came in. So let me go ahead and share that. All right, so let's take a look at the results for our first question tonight, which was about allocating what's most important to, for natural resources, maintenance and enhancement. This particular question, here's the responses. We had option C, restoring existing natural resource areas in parks and other green spaces, received 68% of the vote, by far the most votes. That was followed by creating new natural resource areas in parks to improve them at 25%. And then at 7%, providing natural resource educational opportunities in parks. So we had close to 30 votes, which I think is pretty good considering it's almost 10 o'clock. So let's take a look at our second question. And our second question for the day was about resource investment. And let's take a look at the results of that particular question. So this was looking at investing into items of interest in the parks and recreation area. So in terms of allocation of points, the most points were allocated to option D, maintaining and enhancing natural resource elements in parks and other green spaces. And then that was followed by option C, updating aging recreational facilities at 25%. At 24%, creating new programming for youth. And then at 17%, creating new programming for adults. So Renee, back to you.
Thank you so much, Diane. Chris, if I could have permission again to share my screen, and we will move on to the second part of our presentation tonight.
And before you do so, I might ask the council, are there any questions specific to the benchmarking measures that we, that they discussed here? That we saw? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just got two quick things. When we're looking at trails, talked about the unpaved trails, and we're doing fairly good there. The paved trails, though, we were second to the bottom there. And I think that that is one of the highest priorities that I've seen in multiple different surveys within the community. And so, I don't know if there's a question there or if that's consistent with what information you're looking at as well, I guess.
Yeah, I think we have heard that from the community. Looking at the level of service, you know, we're meeting sort of the standard for trails nationally. But I will say that, you know, Minnesota cities are typically higher than the national standard. So, and it's certainly something that we've heard throughout community engagement. And we're looking at every opportunity to, you know, both increase the amount of off-road trails and the quality of those, but look at other opportunities for even on-road trails to connect the whole system together.
Which that- Thank you, and I appreciate that you mentioned both of those, because I think they're both important, those opportunities. We have those wonderful areas within our community that are still natural to be able to get into and conveniently walk around and go in with our families. And, but then there's that aspect with the on-road connecting various places and being able to get across the community. Quickly, the second thing that I had, and I just, I would encourage you when you look at non, I said on-dude, but the additional revenue sources, look beyond just the users, the associations charging fees and things like that. I'm not saying take those things off the table in any way. But how do we put together an advertising and sponsorship platform that really helps businesses with, particularly local businesses promote what they do? I think we have a huge opportunity to connect a lot of our shops, a lot of our retail, a lot of our restaurants, a lot of our local businesses with the community and providing them a platform to showcase their services and products that in a much better way, in a way that, you know, financially helps the city. But as a small business owner, I can tell you, getting the name of the company out there is something that companies want to do. They want people to know that they're invested in the community, that they, they take pride in being in the community and taking a look at those opportunities. So I think there's a, and I've talked about this a number of times before. I think there's a huge opportunity for more sponsorship, more advertising, and not just charging higher fees to user groups and users and things like that.
Yeah, thank you, council member. I think that's a great point. And we did ask some questions about sponsorships to these other benchmark communities, and they all had more developed plans, definitely, than Bloomington. So I totally agree with you. I think that's a big opportunity there as well for improvement.
Thank you very-
Council, anything else to add? If not, let's move on.
Thank you, Mayor. The next remaining part of our presentation is the equity framework that we've, would like to present tonight. We'll be defining equity related to parks, examine equity from two scales. For the first lens that you've heard us talk about are service areas, which provide a citywide scale. The tool we're going to present tonight gets into a second scale, more neighborhood focused. Brad will talk about that tool specifically and our approaches to equity and kind of the next steps and ongoing work for implementation. So after the presentation, we would like to hear any comments and concerns that you have as we move forward in developing this tool as one, one factor to help us create our capital investment plan. Brad?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Renee. And just saying that I know our team and staff have really been working hard on this equity framework. So we're excited to have a discussion with you about this. And I know staff from across multiple departments have been engaged in this. And it's been, it's been pretty exciting just being a part of it. It's not too many projects that I've been a part of that we've gotten into this. So just, I guess, starting out on that light. But we've also, equity has become pretty, pretty important and very apparent to us through, through our discussions with you and the council priorities. But we've also been hearing it from the community. So last time, I think we came in and talked about our guiding principles, and be equitable is one of those main guiding principles and prioritizing equity throughout the entire system to support everybody and provide inclusiveness is critical. And so we're going to dive into that in even greater detail tonight. There will be a significant section in the final master plan devoted to equity. And really, it's, it's going to be a framework to, or hopefully for, for staff to help guide decision making. And it's going to rely on, you know, a lot of our research and best practices locally and nationally and rely on, it's going to continue to develop and rely on the city's department equity goals and other goals that are going on throughout the city and different initiatives and work plans. But this is kind of just the foundation in the beginning. So there is, as I mentioned, a team of staff that are participating and drafting this section. And they're across different departments and continuing to engage with it. Next slide, please. So this is a pretty meaty topic and it can get complicated quickly. But one of the ways that we have found to navigate this is to really use these questions that were framed specifically for parks by Glenn Harris, who's president of Race Forward, which is a really well-regarded nonprofit dealing with racial justice issues. And he kind of walks through this process and asks some great questions that, you know, require us to think, but also to kind of come up, answer them and come up with strategies to answer them that address equity. And one of the, one of the first ones, of course, is what do we mean by equity? Is defining it just so everybody's on the same page about what equity is. Number two, who has access to parks? We've talked a little bit about access in the past, but that's really one of the big, the big drivers of equity is being able to, to go to the parks and experience them and be a part of them. Number three is who designs the parks? That's important to have people that are creating these spaces for people that are going to use them every day to understand fully what people need and want. Number four is who decides what programs and services will be offered at these parks? So similar to designing the parks, it's looking at the programs and services that really need to reflect the community around them and, and the people that are using them. Number five is, is really, you know, where the rubber meets the road is what dollars are allocated to which parks? And will, the tool will really engage with that question. But firstly, what do we mean by equity? I think there's a really great definition by the National Recreation and Park Association in describing a little bit why equity is important. But it's just the just and fair quantity, proximity and connections to parks and green space, recreation facilities, as well as programs that are safe, inclusive, culturally relevant and welcoming to everyone. So it's not just really focused on park infrastructure. It's focused on everything that the park touches, including the community fabric. Next slide. This is a little bit simpler way, I think, and an interesting way to think about equity and evaluate it compared to equality. I think a lot of people think of them as very similar and use those terms interchangeably, but they're actually quite different in this context. And equality is really about when everybody receives the same thing or the same investment. So the example is showing a new bike. If everybody receives this new bike, that might be great for some people, but it might be completely inappropriate or unusable by other people. And equity really tries to get at this by providing an investment or our thing that will help everybody, it is appropriate for wherever they are. So next slide. We'll talk about kind of an example of that coming up here. But what does this mean for Bloomington? You know, a number of things we've been talking about, like we know that the parks are outdated and they've been historically underfunded citywide. We know that, that applies to these large-scale community facilities like dog parks and ice rinks and warming houses and things that everybody, or at least a majority of the people in the community are going to use. It also applies to neighborhood parks and, you know, the smaller playgrounds and basketball courts that are kind of right next to people's homes that need updates and improvements to be updated. We also know that the distribution of parks in Bloomington is actually really good. It's a great foundation. But when we peer into that a little bit more, we'll look at this in a little bit. Park access is not equal throughout the city when it's kind of dove into a little bit deeper. And replacement of facilities is appropriate. We know we're going to be replacing some facilities, and that might be appropriate in some areas, but not in others. So I think getting back to that kind of bike example and replacing bikes with tennis courts, I think is a good way to think about that. You know, there's a lot of tennis courts in Bloomington, and they're going to need to be replaced. But in some neighborhoods, that might be, you know, perfectly okay and actually might be really appropriate. The neighborhood might want that and use them quite regularly. But there are definitely areas and neighborhoods in Bloomington where that is- But there are definitely areas and neighborhoods in Bloomington where that is not what the community needs or wants, and we should be looking at other types of investments, you know, like pickleball courts or or basketball courts or, or even green space and really engaging the community to find out what they need. So Renee mentioned, we have been looking at this through two different lenses. One is citywide, um this larger lens, and that's looking at those park service areas that we've been talking about, and that has allowed us to do some really great analysis and comparisons between the service areas. Um another way that we've been looking at this citywide um equity is through these community facilities, so these larger park facilities like skate parks and in ice rinks and in dog parks that we've, we've talked with you about in the past. Looking at, you know, the citywide lens has really allowed us to kind of distribute those geographically and try to make sure that there's some, some equality in the city and that people have access throughout the entire community. And again, that comparison, just to make sure that all service areas are invested in and we're not over serving one particular service area over another. And then diving down into the neighborhood lens, that's really allowed us to look at a deeper analysis of park needs, and that's where we start to, to look at this capital improvement prioritization tool that we're going to look at in a little bit. And I think it's important um to note that both lenses really rely on community engagement. That's a critical part of it, but especially at this neighborhood level and building relationships with people in the neighborhood um that are going to be using these parks and need to um need to kind of lead um essentially those park improvement efforts. Slide. So that second question that we looked at is who has access to the parks? And again, it's, this is looking at the service areas and looking at um the community facility distribution um and being able to kind of weigh um what facilities should be where and how we think people um are going to access these facilities and geographically distribute those. So this is definitely at the citywide scale. Next uh, next slide, please. Um zooming down into the neighborhood scale, we're looking at access um not only through this geographic balance of parks, but also just kind of looking at walking. Um we've reviewed these maps before, but just that five and 10-minute walk to a park, the, the darker red is the five-minute walk, the lighter red is the um the 10-minute walk, and this is a really good gauge used by NRPA and the Trust for Public Land um to promote uh a good access, and Bloomington is, has a really great start on that, and eighty-seven percent of the residents um in Bloomington actually are within a 10-minute walk of a, a community or neighborhood park or park space or a regional park space, which is, which is really great. However, um once we start to dive into that a little bit more deeply um and look at these service areas compared to each other, we do notice um some discrepancies. And I think intuitively, people have always felt that the east side um, you know, or the northeast side was sort of underserved by parks, um but I think we, you know, have some numbers to show that. So um looking at just the community and, and um neighborhood park access, looking at it kind of by acreage um and what people are um able to get to and access. Service Area Four, which is the northeast side, you can see highlighted there, is much less than the other neighbor, uh the other service areas, pardon me. At six and a half acres per thousand people. The national standard is um forty-eight acres per thousand people. So it's significantly less than the national average, um the national standard, but I think the other sort of story to be told with that is how important access to the River Valley and to the regional parks are as well. So that's something to keep in mind moving forward. Next slide. So, you know, diving into, into Service Area Four, even um with even greater kind of detail and analysis. You know, we, we found out that um from an equity perspective and an equity lens, um there are some, some issues here. Service Area Four is definitely the highest density service area in Bloomington um of the four. It's got the top eight parks um with the most population, population living near them. It's also the highest number of block groups with ten percent or more below the poverty line. So eight of the top 10 parks that have the highest number of people um living below the poverty line are located in Service Area Four. The largest BIPOC population, the top 11 parks um with the most BIPOC population are in Service Area Four. And then the highest density of children under the age of eighteen, nine of the top 10 parks in this category are in Service Area Four. So these are all things that um really weigh into park equity when we're looking at um that issue. Um so the next question is who designs the parks? And again, from these different scales, um this is really important to make sure that the designers and the people that are creating um the fabric of these parks are really in tune with the neighborhoods, because these parks should um shouldn't mirror the neighborhoods and um, you know, be developed from them. So you know, short of having designers, landscape architects and architects and engineers that um that are BIPOC or that are from um the local community, um one way to get, get um to address that is to really focus on excellent community engagement. And I think we've been um really focusing on that in this, in that mass, in this master plan process, as you know, but um looking at the community facilities um specifically, staff has really been engaging with the community, and I believe um sort of our geographic distribution is still up on Let's Talk Bloomington, so there's a number of ways that we've been trying to engage um the community at the citywide scale. We zoomed down into that neighborhood scale. I think it's really important to, again, um engage the local community around a park, and one of the ways that we're thinking about doing that is to make a recommendation that any significant park improvement project, and we have $250,000 in here as a number right now, but we've been debating and talking about that number. Any um improvements over that amount would require a community-driven park plan. And that just really means um getting some excellent um engagement from the community that um, and that's a process that is currently being um drawn up and defined by park staff in um association with COED and will likely be um, you know, very similar to this process and involve online and hopefully soon some in-person um engagement with translations. And again, it'll really be focused on the neighbors that are surrounding this, each of these um parks as they come up for improvement. Next slide. Question four is who decides what's offered at the parks? So this is similar to who designed the parks, who designs the parks? The services and activities that go on in the parks are just as important and just a part of people's um lives as the parks themselves. Um so a couple of things that I think we can do to continue to um build relationships and um get community impact or engagement is to at least have an annual survey around program offerings and um try and, and understand if there are any barriers to engaging in programs or services, what the needs are, what, what is the city not providing that should, they should be providing? To understand um, you know, people that aren't involved in the process and how we can continually reach out, try to bring them into the process and hear what they need, so we can um make the park system work for everyone. Another important part is um this, this to maintain this reduced and assisted pricing and make sure that we can um budget and cost um and have cost assistance for people that need it. The last question is the big one is what dollars go to which parks, and a lot of these um bullets that you've seen on the left are really things that we've been talking about and are really um primary factors for what goes into equity. Next slide, please. So we have been looking at um a tool to help us prioritize capital improvements. Oh, a little out of- Sorry, a little out of order here. So um this is important. Um here we go. So the tool um for capital investment is um, we've been looking at a number of communities around the country. We've really been focusing on these three that you're seeing. So there are some communities that are doing great work around this, and Minneapolis has really been a pioneer in this. The other model that we've been looking at is Milwaukee. Milwaukee actually took Minneapolis's um model, if you will, and um kind of tweaked it for their own use. And then the last one that we really dove into is the San Diego Park System, which is kind of a totally different type of way that they approached equity through experiences. And I think it's something to think about in the future, but it's not really something that worked um or we thought would work for the city of Bloomington currently. And Milwaukee was highlighted in that last slide because that's the one we actually decided to go with. We thought it was really clear and effective, and we thought the, it fit Bloomington really well because the analysis area that they used fits um Bloomington, and it really aligns with staff resources. So it's something that we feel staff can, can take on um right now and into the future and have it be a really positive experience. So what is it? It's really just a GIS um exercise and analysis and also um looks at characteristics for um for these communities and puts it together in a calculation. So it looks at neighborhood characteristics, population characteristics, and park condition characteristics. All of those things are scored um and added up, and essentially you get an equity prioritization index of value. You get a score for um each park that names and kind of prioritizes how they should be um prioritized for, for capital improvements. So after you go through this GIS exercise and you um come up with these scores, you do kind of a normalization calculation and you weigh these different characteristics. So the neighborhood characteristics are um essentially add up to a quarter of the characteristics. The population characteristics add up to another quarter, and the park condition characteristics um equal half of the score. Um so that's a pretty significant um portion of the score. And again, next slide. So what you actually get is a list, is literally a list with um each park name um and their score. So the score, the higher the score, the more um priority this park has um for improvements from using this equity lens. So it really um identifies the needs based on equity. The hope is that this is really just a quantitative tool for staff and the community, and it takes out um any real or perceived biases from this process. You know, this could be like a calculation, it could be open um for anyone to look at in the public and then examine it. It's a method for building equity, so you look at um Park A, B and C, and you take those off the top of the list and um address those um, and hopefully there's other parks the next year. Next slide. And that really factors into the city's CIP criteria. So this is just a rough um kind of outline of the CIP, CIP criteria. Racial equity, as you can see, is number seven. The score that we get for um each of these parks will be that racial equity score, and it will be evaluated with these other criteria and weighed um for the capital improvement recommendations. In order to do this, there is a critical, there are a couple of critical things that we still need. Um if you recall, park condition made up half of essentially um the score, and we do not have in Bloomington um really great park inventory data, and that's something we would have to work with the GIS department to facilitate is getting an inventory and a really good facility assessment. This could be, this could work and function similar to the Public Works Asset Management System, but it's something that's, we're going to, going to require a lot of upfront legwork to go out into the parks and evaluate the current infrastructure. Localized crime data, I think we've solved this one, um and have got some good contacts with Bloomington Police Department, so I think this is one that um we could probably cross off of the list. And then third is this will require staff resources and analysis um into the future. So any changes that occur can be reflected and updated over time. Um so just kind of in summary, again, we're looking at equity through two lenses. Through the citywide lens, um which we've talked a lot about, is the service areas and looking at the geographic distribution of these larger community facilities. And then next slide is um looking at kind of the neighborhood lens and in diving into it a little bit deeper to understand um what's happening around each of these parks and creating this capital improvement prioritization tool that we just talked about, um I think could be um a really great asset moving forward. And again, community engagement needs to continue to be a, a huge part of this. Um so this is really just the foundation of equity in Bloomington, and it will require continued development. So it, it will require work with the racial equity action team to update and evolve it over time and learn from it. Um and again, we need to continue to build those relationships and trust with the community. That's what's going to help this um pay off and, and make this work. We think um and staff thinks that it will take about one year to make this operational just for the um inventory and things that we talked about before and to really kind of hone in on and, and get it um dialed in. A big part of it is that GIS dashboard creation. And the last thing I kind of wanted to, to sum up is I, I think um you should be commended. I think Bloomington is a pioneer. If you look at all the other cities that um are doing this type of work, they're pretty large cities, but um I think it's awesome that Bloomington is doing this, and I know um our team is really excited to be a part of this process. So we tried to get through that quickly. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you so much, Brad. Um mayor and members of council, um staff would like to have, hear your feedback, questions on this approach in, in putting a quantitative metric to the equity um criteria um in our um decision-making process. So with that, I'll conclude and, and turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the uh, the information. That's a, an interesting way of looking at it and going about it. I, I'm curious to learn more about especially what they're doing in Milwaukee based on the Minneapolis plan. It, it looks very interesting and to see how it will work here as well. I see hands up from uh council member Martin and then council member Carter. Council member Martin.
Uh, thank you very much. And first off, I, I just want to say I am extremely impressed with where this process is uh so far. I, I appreciate staff's work on this. I know um we, we've talked about kind of our aspirational goal of, of one Bloomington for a long time, and we've done a lot of good work um moving towards that. But taking a, a clear-eyed assessment of where we are today, uh I think makes it a lot more feasible uh to get there longer term. And, and the equity lens and the data we have in front of us here uh really shows us the work that we have to do. So I appreciate that being assembled. Um I, just logistically, I'm kind of curious, and, and maybe this is yet to get worked out. Uh with the spending over, say, a, a quarter million dollars in a park kind of triggering that engagement plan, how does that affect the way that we are um kind of building our timeline for projects in a park area? Does that mean we kind of need to have our mini master plan completely fleshed out? Does that kind of put stumbling blocks in terms of doing large projects over the course of a long time? Does it make more sense to throw them all together and then do the community engagement? Kind of what does that look like?
Council member Martin, um members of council, staff is evaluating that right now. I'm actually starting last year as we were considering um our 10-year CIP. We've been factoring in a planning year and a construction year or some planning years for larger scoped projects. So that, that is a consideration in um in implementation and even for um s- smaller investments that don't include a full park renovation that upfront um planning time um that does affect the CIP schedule, and we are, we're looking at um the best approach for that um currently. So it's still evolving.
Thank you.
Council member Martin and Katry here. I just wanted to, to add one thing to that as well. The intent of the $250,000 um threshold, and as Brad mentioned, we might tweak that a little bit, but the intention was to clearly illustrate our intent to do park master plans anytime that there is significant reinvestment needed in a park. Uh we really want to engage the residents in the, in the area around the park and ensure that we're meeting their needs uh with the park. But we also didn't want to, let's say it's a smaller park and it's just a playground replacement. We didn't want to require a full master plan potentially of that park if there's not a lot of change that is potentially um needed at that particular location. So that was kind of the threshold of a, of a playground replacement. We would certainly do a significant community engagement process with that playground replacement, but just not an entire master plan of the whole park.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Council member Carter. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I can keep this short because I had a very similar question to Councilmember Martin. But I just want to say that I think this is fantastic and it's absolutely the direction that we need to be going in. I believe that Minneapolis started down this route after they were heavily criticized because of their inequitable allocation of resources in their city. And so, you know, I think it's great that they've been able to get to a point where they've created a pool like a tool like this and now Milwaukee has and we can learn from those cities. And so I just, I did want to say that I really appreciated the comment that was made around continuing to evaluate and learn and adapt this process for Bloomington. Because I think that will be critical as we move the work forward too. So and then one other point I guess I'll just bring up is, you know, you said engaging the residents in the area. And then I would assume that if there is like a a school close by or some businesses, like I think about like the Normandale Lake area, that we would also be engaging with those stakeholders. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Seeing no additional hands up.
I don't know if you're just mine here. You gotta speak up here.
I don't know if I, I can't see you, Dwayne. I'm sorry. Oh, there you are. Now I see you. Councilmember Loman.
So hey, just a question. We have two questions, actually. Try to keep them reasonable here. We look at the governance of both Minneapolis, Milwaukee, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the last example that was on the on the chart there. How much does that play a role in how they're able to achieve their their equity structure and and execute that? I'm just, I'm just curious about that in terms of, because I know their park board is set up, you know, they've got a much more decentralized system there. I just wanted to understand, you know, is it still decentralized with those other examples there, Milwaukee and the and the other 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 examples?
Yeah, I can chime in here. Thank you, Councilmember Loman. I think Minneapolis is pretty unique in having an independent park board. I don't believe Milwaukee has a similar situation and the other, the other community was San Diego and I don't think that they do as well. So I don't know exactly how the governance would work with with this equity tool, but I I do know that like, one of the reasons that we chose Milwaukee over the Minneapolis model is Minneapolis has really great neighborhood definition and they use that to run their analysis. Whereas, you know, that isn't really happening here in Bloomington. So I think using sort of a spatial analysis around each park, we're using a half mile. Milwaukee used a mile. I think that's a little too far for for Bloomington. So we're looking at a half mile right now. That seems to be a really good way to to kind of get some differentiation between the parks. So that's one big difference that led us to kind of look at the Milwaukee version of that tool.
Councilmember Loman and members of the council, I I would just add as well that I think you hit on a really key point, actually. As we were having these conversations internally to try to figure out which model might work best for Bloomington. That was a really significant piece of it. You know, as Brad mentioned, the park board in Minneapolis is its own entity, its own taxing entity. And the Milwaukee model is actually with the school district and community. So our our organizations are very keenly different. All of the 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 different, you know, areas of local government that are pulling at financial resources are very different as well. So we did factor that in very considerably as we were making a decision on how we thought a model might best fit in Bloomington.
And and those are all good points and just something I just think about it, you know, as a, you know, as a part of this entity, you know, and and part of my studies while I was in college was about decision making. And so I've just, I'm always wondering about, you know, when we look at those different models from an equity standpoint, are there any advantages? And we don't necessarily need to answer that right now. We could take that offline. My next question is around that equity quotient that you had there. I can't remember what the slide you had there. You had the the three different boxes there in terms of that, what that looks like. And so I I just I'm imagining that 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 really could be anything. So how do we handle language within that? That quotient you had, was it was this one? I thought you had some some fillers in there in terms of is the next one up?
Yeah.
But we'll get there. So yeah, there you go. Neighborhood characteristics. So these are just example ones, right? You could put anything in these things, right?
No, that's a great question. And I I went pretty quickly over this, but no, these are actually coming out of both the Minneapolis and Milwaukee models. So income level is a coverage in GIS that we can, you know, you can get that. There's different data sources. You can use ESRI. You can use the community survey. But you can get that information and how these are scored is the neighborhood characteristic, you know, income level. You'll get a higher score for areas around a park that have lower incomes essentially. And, you know, using the GIS data, poverty rate's the same thing. You'll get a higher score for more households that have a higher poverty rate, as well as, you know, you know, down the line, diversity with race and crime rate as well. So these are you know, coverages in GIS that are being used. Now, there are, like I mentioned, a couple of different kind of accepted types of data. And I think the city and the GIS department will have to determine which is the best one for you guys to use.
Because I just, I'm curious about, you know, language and what those other factors might be that might play a role in that. I know, I know at this point in time, maybe that isn't. But if you start, if you look at just, you know, that fourth area there, language could be a distinguishing factor between the different areas. And I wonder how this would handle that. When we talk about, you know, equity among different parts, you know, from a quantitative standpoint of of where these areas land, that could, you know, make a significant difference in terms of how folks are accessing those resources or utilizing those resources. Or for say disability status, you know. So just, and maybe you can't, maybe you can't quantify it, but I just, I just wanted to know. What it sounds, what I'm hearing you say is that there are limitations in terms of what we can measure because of the tool that we have. Is that a reasonable observation?
Yeah, Councilmember, yeah. No, that's, it's a great follow up question. And I think we, I guess, maybe simply stated, we are kind of using Minneapolis and Milwaukee as kind of our guide here to start with. These are sort of accepted ways that they have set up their tool and that's kind of how we're starting. But, you know, mentioning accessibility and access, I could easily see that coming into the park condition characteristic down the road. I think that's a great one. And I I haven't seen a lot of that in the research that we've done that has been involved. So that's something for sure as this develops that could be included.
So I hope that we will, as we're looking at this, and I'm not saying we've got to do this right now, but just from a staff standpoint, maybe as we're looking out as ways to engage folks, to really challenge each one of these boxes so that we're really creating you know, and just because other groups have done it, that's great. I think that's a good thing. But as we look forward on this, that we're challenging this to make sure that we're creating the, you know, the best quantitative measure possible kind of going forward, especially if we're going to be making decisions in Bloomington about this. You know, Minneapolis and and Bloomington are a little bit different. And I wouldn't want to miss the nuance between those two. Like I even think about, I mean, even your your housing that you have, it could be something you could look at as well in terms of how old your housing is and that type of repair that's needed for that. So that's, that's not a that's not related to your income, but the amount of money you're going to have to put into your housing, that's going to, you know, that's going to impact that, you know, rental versus owning your property. That's another thing I would look at too as well. I know that's a big part of Minneapolis. I know that when I was doing stuff, when I was going to college there and and a part of this. So I'm going to stop there. I know we're running close on time, but I wanted to just make that comment.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Loman.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think I got two questions. The first one is just a clarification. There was a chart in there that showed the amount of park space. I think it was the acres per thousand people. Did that only include city land or did it include any of the regional or international parks in that?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. No, that included, that was just community and neighborhood parks. So city parks essentially.
Okay. The reason I asked is I I saw that Council District Two was actually one of the lower ones there and a good portion of my district is Highland Park and which is fairly significant. So so I would just suggest taking a look at that. With that being said, I, you know, I do think that the, you know, the National Reserve in Service Area Four in this chart, there's fees and things like that which make it a little bit different. And I I don't think your, your main point, I don't think is discredited by that. I just want to make sure I understood what was in there. And this is not in any way to take away from the analysis you did on equity, which I think was good. This is very much an and to that. But I would consider, or I would urge you to consider the jobs aspect of it of how we employ people throughout the community in terms of jobs and things like that in the service area. I know there are a number of, you know, regular full time jobs, but we have a ton of of summer jobs. You know, I have teenagers. I know a lot of their friends and stuff have had jobs within the Park and Rec Department. We've been fortunate to have people before the council that have started out in those roles. And how do we make sure we equitably distribute those jobs and opportunities within the community, particularly considering that some of them, you know, they don't require the transportation and things like that. That's many other jobs and barriers that are there for people. So that's just, again, an and it doesn't detract from the the good analysis you did here, but just another consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Council, any additional questions? If not, I'd like to move us along on our agenda and thank our presenters this evening. This was interesting stuff, a good next step. I echo everybody's sentiments that this whole process is moving along very impressively and appreciate the work that you're putting into it. And Diane, I'd be interested to hear more about how Polco worked and and what your thoughts were on all of that and looking forward to seeing that again in the future. So anything else, Council? If not, thank you much.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council.
Let's move to item 8.4 on our agenda, our legislative update. And Mr. Shane Rudling is here with us late once again this evening. Good evening, Shane. Thanks for being with us. Shane, you are muted.
Of course I am. Thank you, Mayor Council. Got a short deck to present legislative updates. So on the federal ARP plan, the 1.9 trillion dollar federal plan, we continue to analyze how that money can be used and there are now webinars and things like that that certain staff are going to be attending and will be, again, providing more information to the council as as we learn more about that. I think the biggest thing we learned over the past week is that if the council wants to, they can transfer those funds or a portion of those funds to Convention and Visitors Bureau, Port Authorities, or HRAs if they want to. Again, it looks like Bloomington will receive about 11.4 million out of that that large bill. On the taxes side, in Bloomington, our two redevelopment district asks are moving along in the House and in the Senate. We will take, they will take testimony on the two bills in the Senate this Wednesday morning and they did the House last week. Good news is, is that over the weekend, the House Property Tax Division report had both Bloomington TIF district bills in the report, which is good. So we're good on the House side, at least it's today. Rubber meets the road always at the end of the session during the conference committee. The other thing that's notable in the House Property Tax Division report is Tourism Improvement District. Legislation is in there. There's some links and other information was included in one weekly last week. Basically, what this is, is it is a another version of local lodging tax that would come along in addition to the 7% that Bloomington already collects. It's more of a voluntary program as it's written currently where the hotel community would see a proposal from the Convention and Visitors Bureau on what they would use the money for and things like that. But it is, you know, in essence, another local lodging tax when it comes down to it. So we'll continue to monitor that if it gets legs, especially in the Senate and other areas. We'll, of course, update you all on that as well. And then the other big thing, I think, over the past week is just hospitality legislation. There's a lot of conversation about that. Of course, staff has been and the lobbying team has been in a monitoring position only on that and will feed information to the council as we're aware of it. Again, we're just monitoring only more so in a neutral stance on all of that until there's more meat on the bone. And that's, of course, one of the reasons why we're scheduled with these weekly updates because that could move fairly quickly as the session, you know, we're in the second half of the session, if you will, almost here. So with that, be happy to take any other questions that the council has. And that's it.
Thanks, Shane. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'd just like to pick up on that last point, Shane, in terms of the hospitality legislation. I had an opportunity to have a conversation with Bonnie Carlson, the president of the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau. It sounds like there's actually quite a bit of activity at the legislature in terms of various proposals and things working with the hospitality industry at large, the Minnesota Hospitality Association, as well as various convention and visitors bureaus. And I am just wanting to make sure that our Bloomington position is that we're in a position to articulate our position and overall, hopefully, our support for the hospitality industry. You know, and what are the parameters for that support and things like that? I know we had a discussion with the Port Authority a couple of weeks ago. And I think there's some apprehension, apprehension that I have in terms of utilizing some funds that would largely go to private gains and and to help support that. But I think overall, providing a bridge and support for a hospitality industry to to get through this extraordinarily difficult time. And so I'm just wondering, you know, if it makes sense to do anything with our legislative policy that gives Shane and our staff a little bit more flexibility to engage in those conversations beyond just monitoring in a way that benefits the community and maybe come back to the council and to the Port Authority. I think we have a meeting April 5th with more specifics and things like that. And just, I kind of want to put that on the table for discussion. Again, I'm I'm apprehensive and concerned about, you know, some some aspects that would allow utilization of public funding for private projects. I I'm still not sure that's the right way to go, but I think that having some flexibility to take a look at various aspects of legislation and policy makes some sense. And so maybe, I don't know, if if Shane, if you can help me, if Jamie can help me kind of figure out if there's a pathway there and obviously my colleagues here, if there's an openness to that. Just wanted to put that on the table.
Thank you, Councilmembers. So if if what you're asking, tell me if I'm hearing what you're asking, that you're looking for an option or a possibility to more generally support hospitality related type legislation or proposals that would come forward, whether it's officially through our our legislative policy or more informally until we get a chance to talk to the to the the council and the port together. Just kind of more in general, without a specific proposal in front of us, so just a more general statement in terms of supporting the hospitality industry in ways that we can.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, based on my conversation, it sounds like there are a number of different things being discussed. And I'm just concerned that Bloomington's voice isn't actively engaged when we're in a monitor only position as opposed to advocating what's in the best interest of our community on those. as opposed to advocating what's in the best interest of our community um, on those uh, various issues. And you know, I, I raise concerns. I know fellow colleagues here and people throughout the community have concerns about things. And I think staff is aware of those, but um, I'm just concerned that, you know, we're in a monitor-only position when there's a number of different proposals and we could be uh, providing um, more guidance and shaping those in a way that's going to be beneficial for, for us and, and frankly, probably for the state as well.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree. I think for, for Bloomington to be in this, this uh, monitoring-only position, I think is, it is a bit cumbersome and it feels a, a bit reactive as opposed to trying to, to do a bit to shape or to push things along in a certain direction. Um, uh, Mr. Verbrugge, uh, Mr. Rudling, any, any thoughts or ways to add to this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, uh, I, I think that that's a pretty astute observation, that things are changing quickly, which is why we scheduled these weekly meetings. I know that Shane has been uh, working with a, a number of folks to understand what the legislation is that's moving. I've similarly had conversations with Bonnie Carlson over at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And they are very active, uh, trying to pursue uh, anything that's going to assist hospitality right now. And um, you know, that's the general sense I'm getting from Councilmember Nelson. So I think it would be helpful with other councilmembers if um, what you're directing staff to do is to uh, be more active in pursuing um, what's going to help hospitality generally. Uh, and I think there are a couple of um, uh, guiding principles that uh, I think were discussed uh, at the previous meeting. And um, uh, I've heard from councilmembers in, in subsequent discussions, wanting to make sure that what we're doing is uh, in the interest of the entire community, that it's not solely focused in one area. Uh, and also, you know, some interest in tools that may be temporary in nature, uh, the, the flexibility discussion again, um, which is consistent with language that uh, or bills that like the League of Minnesota Cities is also pursuing. Uh, and those may not specifically be uh, for hospitality, but it is the kind of flexibility that we've talked about in the past. And in fact, we just have those couple of districts that are uh, on this, that Shane had shared previously. Shane, anything more you want to add there?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, your manager. Um, yeah, I mean, uh, again, we're in a monitoring situation right now. I mean, I, I don't think that um, you know, I think it goes without saying that Bloomington supports the hospitality industry. It's such a big part of our, of our community. Um, but if we wanted to, you know, we, we could put together some options for the council to consider uh, at the April 6th port and council meeting. And there could be more discussion at that time. Um, I think even, you know, just a few comments tonight kind of helped clarify um, council's direction to staff on what we should be doing. Um, you know, in, in St. Paul as it relates to this. Um, and we have a lot of partners and stakeholders, BCVB, others that, that again, are moving things. And there's a lot of discussion happening right now, obviously because of COVID and the impact to the industry and, and so on. And so um, if the council would like us to, we could put together some options and present them at the April 6th meeting.
I see uh, Councilmember Carter's hand up and then Councilmember Loman and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully my audio is okay for now. Um, so I want to thank Councilmember Nelson for bringing this back up. And I am um, you know, more than, I, I think it makes a complete sense to, to have this conversation again and, and for us to be in more than just a monitoring position, given the stake.
Councilmember, I'm afraid we've lost your audio again.
Hey, let me try. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we try it without camera for a minute and see if that works? Go ahead.
Okay, yep, yep, I'll keep my camera off. So um, I was saying that uh, you know, I've had a chance to connect with Mr. Verbrugge. Um, it, it just had a couple of conversations about this. And for me, what I would really like to see, and I think this is what was, that was alluded to, um, just some clear criteria for, you know, what types of legislation we'd be willing to support. And also, you know, what types of legislation that we would not, would be, we'd be opposed to. Um, and if there are some specific pieces moving forward, and you know, I'm thinking about the, the conversations we've had around TIF. Um, you know, as, as was mentioned, you know, I personally would be um, I'd want to have some more conversations around what that would really look like in terms of benefiting the whole city, being temporary. Um, and then uh, just incorporate some of the other things that we've talked, we talked about in that last port and council meeting. Um, so again, I'm, I'm definitely willing, I, I'm, I think we should have this conversation, revisit this conversation. Um, but I just want to be super clear about, you know, what it is that we are willing to support and what it is that we are just not willing to support and having that really clearly laid out.
Councilmember Loman.
Now, I think my point I, I left at the last meeting is pretty clear and I haven't changed my position around making sure that we're at the table. Uh, uh, guiding the conversation. So I guess my question that I have though, uh, for you, uh, Shane, uh, and for the mayor, are there any risks for us waiting uh, between now and April the 6th? Rather than trying to give uh, staff and uh, your team uh, something temporary at this point to, to bring back for us to look at um, uh, for April the 6th. Just want to throw that out there. Uh, certainly if we're not, you know, if we want to stay in that monitoring setup between now and April 6th, uh, just curious what kind of risk we would uh, associate with that.
Well, that's a good question, I think. And, and I think the, the answer could go one of a couple of ways, I guess. Uh, yeah, there probably is risk because as we've said, things are moving fast over there and, and do happen fast. We could potentially, I guess, simply give staff direction this evening to, to do uh, whatever we're, we think is appropriate. And then make something more formal at our port council meeting on uh, April 5th, 6th, whatever date that is. Or uh, if we wanted to wait that long, I, I guess we could and then react more quickly. Um, if we wanted to, the trick is we don't, we don't have a council meeting next week for the first time in a while. So we don't have a council meeting between now and then. So uh, I mean, I, my inclination would be perhaps to give staff direction this evening about what we would like to see them do over the next couple of weeks before we formalize it at that meeting.
So Mayor, and I heard you kind of start to do that with what uh, Sean kind of said, and I know he's going to speak next. I, I would, I would kind of lean into you uh, to uh, see if you can uh, craft something up that maybe we all could, could get around.
We will do that. Let's let uh, everybody uh, chime in here and, and we'll see what we can come up with. How about if we do that? So Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, it just quickly, you know, as I already articulated, one of my big concerns was using um, some of these funding sources for largely for private benefit, that, that'll always be a concern for me. But um, uh, the other part of this is that um, I really wanted to hear from the local hospitality industry, you know, largely led by the Bloomington Convention Visitors Bureau. Like I said, I was able to have that conversation with Bonnie and understand the support that they have and anything that came forward out of whatever different mechanism and things like that. I would want to make sure that, that our hospitality industry in general, in, in its totality, was leading any type of efforts in that. And so my request would be um, at our next meeting that uh, um, if, if Bonnie's available, Ms. Carlson, um, if she could join us and just kind of talk to what, what they're looking at, what they're seeing, what would help them, that would be extremely beneficial for me um, to, to hear from that. It was personally, I think it'd be good for the community as well. So I guess those are my two things is, let's, let's be wary of uh, using too much money to bu- benefit private interests. And let's uh, uh, look at the hospitality industry in total and let our Convention and Visitors Bureau lead any initiatives there.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Coulter and Councilmember Martin, before we get to that, could, I, I'd like to make a quick motion that we uh, extend to no later than 11:15 to complete our business this evening.
Second, Councilmember Loman.
Motion and a second, or is there any discussion on this or? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga.
Hi.
Carter?
Hi.
Coulter?
Hi.
Loman?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussie?
Hi. So we were officially, we're extended no later than 11:15 to finish up this evening's business, and I think we're getting close. So thanks for the discussion and thanks for that. Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to, to sort of go back on something that was discussed, I'm not necessarily concerned, you know, sort of putting on my day job hat here. Uh, as far as, you know, I, I think giving staff direction tonight is a good idea. And then coming back with something more formal on the 6th. Um, the, the next sort of big date in terms of the legislature's timeline is, I believe it's April, Friday, April 9th, is the third committee deadline, um, when all budget bills have to be referred to either the House Ways and Means Committee or the Senate Finance Committee or already passed out to uh, to the floor. Um, and that week is really when more of that sort of big work in terms of the big finance and tax bills um, is really going to take place in committee. Um, so I think if we can get something on the books on the 5th to the 6th, like I think we'll probably be okay. Um, and then obviously, once that process moves forward, then conference committees will take it from there. Um, you know, I, I think I just want to also just kind of echo a lot of what, what Councilmember Nelson said. I think um, you know, we, we often talk about hospitality in the city of Bloomington as though it's located entirely east of Highway 77. Um, and that's just, that's just not the case. And I think um, we, we need to be very careful about how we construct things. Um, and, and being clear about who, who, you know, who these things should benefit in terms of sort of the, the broader community or, you know, whoever else. So um, those are just my thoughts.
Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I think um, really the distinction in my mind, um, as, as this speaks to a little bit here is, are we seeking flexibilities or new capabilities in order to help our hospitality industry bridge this downturn until they get back to a place um, where things are a little more stable, even if that isn't back to 100% of where we were before? There's a longer tail on that. Um, I just know the last time this came before us, there was a lot of discussion about projects. Um, and I just personally am extremely hesitant to talk about additional flexibility for projects. Um, e- especially if the purpose of them is to induce uh, visits to the community that wouldn't have existed other, otherwise tourist attractions, things like that. I just think that's a, a lot thornier of a conversation if we're looking for uh, spending flexibility to generate uh, things like that. So yeah, if additional flexibility for staff to be at the Capitol looking for that bridge capability, I can support.
Councilmember Beloga.
Sorry, uh, I had a problem getting my mute off. Uh, we need to do this and we need to do it promptly. And I uh, I find that this is uh, very acceptable to me. Um, and I'd be willing to support uh, this set of uh, criteria. And if we're looking for an opportunity to do it, and I think we need to do it tonight, and implement it as quickly as possible because the window is closing. And uh, we need to uh, uh, throw lifelines to that hospitality industry. As to hospitality industry goes, so does industry in Bloomington. Whether we uh, uh, like it or not, uh, we are married to that today. It's our, uh, between retail and hospitality and restaurants. Uh, it's our largest single uh, economic engine and largest employment sector. And uh, to change that is going to take uh, decades if, uh, at a minimum. So um, I encourage all of us to uh, go forward with this and do it uh, tonight. That industry is so stressed, it's uh, there uh, and, and it, and it varies because we have very small uh, restaurateur owners who are doing uh, uh, you know, just barely hanging on. And then we have uh, megaliths that uh, are equally financially distressed. So um, all I can say is, is we need to support those who brought us to the party and uh, do it now.
So counsel, uh, and I, I think you see on your screens, Shane's just put together some ideas for temporary authority. And if we would, if we would frame this in such a way that we're directing staff temporarily between now and when we can officially uh, make a formal change in a couple of weeks perhaps to the um, to the legislative agenda, to direct staff to, to work legislatively in St. Paul with uh, with policymakers, with lawmakers on provisions that uh, from a general standpoint, help the hospitality industry, that minimize private single entry entity benefit, that uh, that are temporary. Obviously, the, the uh, assistance, the work would be COVID-related. It would be temporary. It wouldn't be a permanent anything. The proposals would have to help the whole city. We would need the support of the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we would have to, uh, I think this is a longer-term discussion that was brought up, and I think it's a good one, to look at proposals that look at as a um, a, a bridge in the middle of this downturn with, because of COVID versus long-term hospitality stability, which is obviously needed and, but it is a longer-term kind of thing. It wouldn't, it's not something that's going to happen overnight. But um, I think both of those are important. And I think we'd have to maybe make uh, some distinctions between those two as we move forward. So if um, if those seem to be, if these seem to be decent parameters, decent bullet points to use to direct staff to uh, to uh, move beyond monitoring legislation and move into a more active role, uh, I think we should consider that this evening. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just one quick, maybe um, slight nuance here. The BCVB's supported, I would prefer to see them to be in the lead, not just supporting the project, but that, that they were pulling together the entire industry and, and any uh, proposals, initiatives and things like that. I, the, you know, I think they're well-positioned to lead our industry um, out of this absolutely horrendous time that the industry is in. And, and so let's support them in their efforts.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, I do know in my conversations with Bonnie Carlson, she's very concerned about the uh, amount of um, activity that could be construed as lobbying, um, because it actually uh, has tax implications for them. Um, so we'll, we'll talk to uh, we'll talk to Bonnie Carlson about that. Um, but recognize that they're not necessarily a lobbying organization, but to uh, Councilmember Nelson's point, uh, they do work closely with Hospitality Minnesota and a lot of other organizations. So um, we'll, we'll be working closely with them.
And if I could, Mayor.
Councilmember.
Um, I just, in terms of the lead on it, it, it wasn't necessarily so much in terms of the lobbying effort. Um, it, it's in terms of the sort of the vetting of ideas and what would be helpful and potential areas that uh, you know, the, there may be investments in that could help uh, our hospitality industry. I'd like to see them on the lead on that type of stuff. Um, if there are other entities better positioned to lobby, um, that's a, a whole different skill set and, and that, that's fine if they're supporting those efforts in my mind. Um, you know, my big thing is this, this needs to be the entire industry driving a plan forward that's going to help the entire industry within Bloomington.
Councilmember Beloga.
Very old hand.
Oh, sorry. So counsel, any other comments or thoughts on some of these uh, these bullet points, these, this proposal that we, we move forward? We direct staff to uh, to, to move off of the monitoring position that we are currently in and to move to a more active position that we would outline here. Councilmember Loman?
Do we need to vote on this or are we good just as, as it's lies?
Mr. Verbrugge, what do you think?
Um, Mr. Mayor, we often a- act with direction by consensus. Um, I think what I've heard council say is that we come back on April say is that we come back on April 5th and have maybe something that we would amend the legislative policies with because our policy actually is pretty silent on hospitality issues. So I think the understanding that's on the screen here, but if somebody feels that it would be better to formalize it, then that's certainly the prerogative of council. And maybe that is the best way to go, to just formalize direction to staff.
Why don't we formalize this as directions to staff that to outline, to move toward a more active effort based on the six bullet points, six bullet points that we have listed here, asking staff to move forward with temporary authority until we can have a more formal and official abridgement or update to our legislative policy at the next Council Port Authority joint meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen, please.
Thank you. Mayor, was that you that made the motion?
Yes, it was. Yep.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. And Councilmember Nelson, thanks for bringing this back forward. Thanks for your thoughts on this and other councilmembers as well. Thanks for your consideration of this. I think it's, it's an important topic, obviously, with, as Councilmember Beloga laid out, this is an important topic for the city of Bloomington. And I'm glad to see that we can get to this point. And certainly, in an issue this important in a legislative session that's becoming more important at a time that's, that needs some big decisions, I'm glad that Bloomington could be a bit more active than simply monitoring legislation. So thank you for your time with that. And thank you for your efforts there. We have four minutes left to move to our final item of the evening, which is our City Council Policy and Issue Updates. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just one item, and I included in the information sent out to council earlier. I believe you've also seen a calendar invitation from the council secretary for April 26th. We did not originally have that date scheduled as a regular council meeting. We were planning to use that date for a forum similar to one we've done a couple of years ago, coordinated by Urban Land Institute of Minnesota on navigating competitive future. And given the uncertainty of the economy right now, we felt it would be better to wait until the fall when we start to see what the economic recovery is beginning to look like. And that actually times out with some of the community's strategic planning process pretty well, too. So I would like to take advantage of that night being available, as we've had to delay the schedule on our tobacco ordinance, which we were planning for April 12th. But in order to do engagement with the license holders, we wanted a little bit more time to do that. So if the 26 poses problems for folks, please let me know by tomorrow morning so that I can give our staff some direction, the ones who are working on the tobacco ordinance, whether that will be the date because we do have to send some notices out.
Understood. Thank you. Council, anything to add? Policy and issues update? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Coulter.
Second, Beloga.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your good work this evening. Well done, staff. Thanks to everybody who's tuned in and stuck with us this late. We have next week off. How about that? So we will see you on the, what is it, the 4th or the 5th, first Monday in April. So very good. Have a good evening, folks. Thanks much.